Well, I'm gonna do the dressing down there. Yeah. When? Oh, come up here, like from the backside? From the backside? Just, uh... As Pacer. Okay. Okay, okay. So you'll come up behind me? Yeah. So I don't even see you. So I don't even see you. Okay. You're fine, just don't put like rabid.
Once again, if there's anyone that'd like to speak tonight, you're in the ten-minute public input or either of the public hearings, I need for you to sign in, please. Thank you.
Members to stand when I introduce them, and you are first.
Yes, sir. Yeah, just a few minutes, yes, sir.
So good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out on a rainy night to join us. And would you please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation?
Pledge allegiance to the fact of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're honored this evening to have Pastor Brando with United Pentecostal Church to give the invocation.
Without third known everyone, let's gonna pray because we need the Jesus give us wisdom and everything. So if you can pray with me, I wanna try to do in English and Spanish, so. Uh, Lord, we need your wisdom and instruction to discern the words of understanding, to receive instruction in wise dealing, in righteousness and justice and equity, to give providence to the simple, to the John main knowledge and description. We need you, Lord, to deny. Señor, pedimos tu dirección, sabiduría para todos los que estamos acá. Pedimos que sea tu Espíritu Santo dándonos las palabras, la dirección correcta, la sabiduría, la inteligencia, para que todos podamos vivir en justicia y equidad. In the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Brando.
Those are some great words from our Team Canton. Meaningful and thoughtful, but more important, these people walk their talk every day, so that's great, so. So good evening, City Council, City Manager Peppers, Assistant City Manager Ingram, Chief Merrifield, Team Canton members, distinguished guests, and my fellow Canton citizens. It's an honor to provide my third State of the City address this evening, both of those here in City Hall and those watching at home on our livestream. Last year, the State of the City was presented virtually, and even though thousands of people have watched the video, nothing compares to speaking to you in person tonight. To say the last two years have been eventful is an understatement. But tonight, I'm proud to report that the challenges of the past twenty-four months have not slowed down our city's progress or our goal of becoming the coolest small town in America. With a strategic roadmap in place at the beginning of 2021, our dedicated council and staff diligently planned our work and worked our plan. We've delivered on old promises and created new aspirations to improve the quality of life for all Canton citizens throughout our city. You've heard a lot about our roadmap for success, a fifteen-year plan that aligns our vision with the priorities of our citizens. However, the roadmap is more than just eight tenants with a list of priorities and projects underneath. It's also a simpler way to hold your leaders accountable for how we are delivering on those promises. Tonight, I'm incredibly proud to share with you some of the exciting 2021 achievements that are worth noting and celebrating by all Cantonians. And speaking of celebrating, I'm extremely proud to report that Canton just received the 2021 Visionary City Award from the Georgia Municipal Association and Georgia Trend Magazine for our Roadmap for Success Initiative. The Word honors cities that have created positive community change through effective civic engagement, collaboration, and I want to congratulate our council and our management team for this prestigious recognition. Thank you for your hard work, vision, and dedication to our city. And here's our bling, so. Mr. Peppers told me not to touch it, but I can't help it, so. So tonight, the state of our city is more promising than ever. An ambitious roadmap in place and a city council that is never content with resting on its laurels, Canton is fulfilling its true potential. For me, 2021 was by far the most productive year in my eight years of public service. If we reviewed everything we accomplished in 2021, tonight, we'd be here until midnight. I know you wouldn't appreciate that. So as I began to put together the list of the few of the more notable 2021 accomplishments tonight, I really realized that we need to do a much better job of sharing our victories with our residents on an ongoing basis. I hope you will agree that 2021 was successful in moving Canton forward as a great place to live, work, play, and serve. So let's get to it. Let's review the eight tenants in our roadmap for success and some of the things we accomplished this year. I want to begin, before we list all these great things, just by saying none of this would be possible without the people sitting behind me tonight, especially our City Council members. I want to introduce each of them. I'm gonna ask them to stand as I introduce and remain standing until the end. Hold your applause to the end and recognize these people for their great work and accomplishments that we're celebrating tonight. Beginning with Ward One, Mayor Pro Tem Sandy McGrew. Joellen Wilson, Ward One also. And Ward Two, Will Carlin. Ward Two, Sean Tolan, who had some eye surgery today, so unfortunately cannot be here tonight, but he's watching from home. Hello, Sean, we miss you. Ward Three, Councilor Brooke Schmidt. And our newest member, we're excited to have on board, Ward Three also, Mr. Dwayne Waterman. So let's give these hard-working members. Also want to thank our guiding star, the individual that tries to keep us in line on a daily basis. It's a hard task, but our City Manager, Mr. Billy Peppers, who's the envy of all cities throughout Georgia, so, but we have him and he does a great job for us. Our foundation, the guy that keeps our feet to the ground, our Assistant City Manager, Mr. Nathan Ingram. We just moved back up the diocese, so I don't know where the hell anyone's sitting, so. Our Chief of Police, Chief Mitchell, I mean Chief Merrifield, sorry. I do that all the time, so, those are him, but we couldn't accomplish anything that we do if we didn't have a great leader in Chief Merrifield and a great police department that keeps our city safe and doing all the outreach that they do. And our Team Canton. Thank you, yes. And Team Canton, our staff that shows up every day and does the hard work. So if you're a member of Team Canton, would you please stand? Thank you all for your great work. So let's get to our accomplishments, and I'll review them by the tenants and our roadmap, beginning with number one, creating great neighborhoods. And this tenant states, "Safe, attractive, connected, and inviting neighborhoods are the foundation of Canton's hometown appeal. All residents deserve quality housing that reflects our community character through thoughtful design and responsible development practices." So some of the things we accomplished this past year. We conducted and completed a housing needs assessment. We adopted that assessment. We looked at every housing type throughout the city and housing types that we were missing, housing types that we needed. We require developers, when they bring a project to the city, to self-rate themselves on their project on this housing needs assessment, how it fulfills the needs in that assessment, and also the roadmap, that they sign an affidavit that they've read the roadmap and they tell us how their project would contribute to our roadmap. We completed neighborhood paving projects in River Green, Whispering Woods, Breeze Hill, and Shoal Creek. We conducted a code compliance review and 2022 enforcement strategy. Wanted to thank Councilor Tolan for chairing that committee and his hard work in housing in general. He chairs our housing committee and he's very passionate. If you've ever spoken to him, you know how passionate he is about housing. We conducted, created a framework for historic neighborhood improvements, and that's looking at our historic neighborhoods throughout the city. Our large developments have HOAs, and we're gonna also give some equal time and a lot of attention to our historic neighborhoods in the city. We launched personal transportation vehicle districts in River Green and Town Mill. We have ongoing Sunnyside placemaking initiatives to improve that district, and a district that's very important to Canton. We created new banners for Sunnyside to welcome people to Sunnyside, 'cause a lot of people didn't know where Sunnyside was. So now they know where they are with these bright yellow banners in both English and Spanish. Team Clean Canton picked up eight hundred ninety-seven sanitation work orders, and this is everything that, not that this would ever happen, but that Waste Management missed, so our team went out and picked up these items. Public Works picked up eleven hundred and forty-seven brush pickups and some of the Canton Police Department outreach. Last year, our police department conducted twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-one calls for service in last year alone. They also conducted Halloween Neighborhood Safety Program, five roving roll calls, two popsicle with a cop, coffee with a cop, shopping with a cop, and the list goes on and on, so. So going to the celebrating the diversity of our community tenant. And we believe that diverse cultures and communities within Canton are vibrant and engaging. Economic, cultural, and social diversity is encouraged throughout the city. Some of our accomplishments included, we started a new diversity inclusion task force and a new public safety advisory board for our citizens. These were kind of started at the kind of the height of the pandemic. We learned a lot. We have a lot of challenges here. We're gonna apply this knowledge and we're gonna do much better going forward. So one thing about this team is that we learn and we grow and we get better going forward. I want to thank Counselor Carlin for chairing our Public Safety Advisory Board this past year. We finally, between the pandemic and Omnicrom, we were able for our Canton's advisors to launch an outreach event. They're really their first public event at a meeting at the Mill on Etowah. And we had, it was a blustery day, a rainy day, but we had quite a few teens show up, and it was a great event. And we have our three advisors in the audience tonight. I want to introduce them, ask them to stand. Sophia Melbourne, Lacey Klein, and Mackenzie Rodriguez. These young ladies represent the best our city has to offer, and I look forward to listening to the State of the City address from one of these ladies, I'm convinced, in the near future, so. We continue our efforts to translate more of our documents and services in Spanish. City of Canton was the first city in Georgia to translate our budget in Spanish. Our roadmap is also available in Spanish and a lot of our other materials. We also began conducting blind application review processes. So anyone who applies for employment to City of Canton, all their personal information, name, sex, all those things, anything personal, is blinded out, so we're just looking at qualifications. We're using the diversity of our own workforce to conduct interviews for new candidates, to get diverse perspectives on those candidates. Several volunteers of our staff participated in a united way twenty-one-day diversity training. So this was a seven-week training that looked at diversity in our community, the history of diversity and the history of racism in our region. Our police department participated in a Faith and Blue Food Drive events, I think more than one. They also worked with St. Paul AME, a unity, for a unity and faith event. And we had our first inaugural multicultural festival, which was a huge success, thanks to our police department, Chief Merrifield and his team, and the United Pentecostal Church. Pastor Brando gave the wonderful invocation tonight. We had great music and food and representatives from, I think it was fifteen, sixteen countries, something like that. Don't quote me exact number, so it's a wonderful event in Etowah River Park, and we had media from Atlanta and other parts of Georgia, so it was really a great event. So moving on to the tenant for advancing regional economic success, which reads, "Utilizing existing business strengths in the industry, healthcare and entrepreneurial spirit, Canton seeks to expand its economic footprint. Diverse and innovative businesses' growth will support jobs, attract investment, and create tourism opportunities." So some of the things, some of the action items we completed. Last year alone, we saw, the City of Canton saw two million one hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven square feet of new development. Look at that number again, pretty impressive. We had one hundred and eleven million dollars in new construction projects. We worked with our state legislators to finally get rid of antiquated state law that kept Canton for putting liquor store sales referendums on the ballot. We got that changed. We got it on the ballot in November, and the citizens overwhelmingly approved it by eighty-four percent. Which means, that may sound, you know, nice if you want to enjoy a martini on Friday night, but that also means that all the sales of liquor and package stores that have been going to our neighboring cities, all that tax money will now stay in the City of Canton to go to work for our citizens. Northside Cherokee Hospital continues its growth in becoming a major healthcare center for quality healthcare in the state, in North Georgia. We started a Connect Canton Chamber Membership Partnership Program, which gives all the new businesses that start in Canton a one-year membership in the chamber. Marvel Studios filmed a great project in downtown Canton in the Jones Building, and some of you may have heard about this, but you can watch it today, a Hawkeye series on the Disney Channel. We created a tax allocation district study and redevelopment plan, and we approved that, council did, which will finally address exit sixteen on Hickory Flat Highway coming in from five seventy-five, where all businesses and GPS brings people in from Atlanta, from the airport. It'll prove that corridor and really all the remaining blighted areas in downtown through the Stumptown neighborhood, some of our historic neighborhoods that need some infrastructure improvement. And so we're very excited about this. It's a huge opportunity for Canton, and we've been working on this for quite a long time, and so we're really excited to see this take hold, so. We looked, one of the housing issues we looked at is actually Canton did not have enough hotel inventory, so we are seeing new development in the hotel industry, and you'll see the new hotels opening in the very near future, the Holiday Inn Express and Fairfield Inn and Suites. We opened a new Canton Visitor Center at the Historic Canton Theater to promote tourism and economic development. We received a tourism development report from the Georgia Department of Economic Development, helping us to leverage tourism through all parts of Canton and our tourism products. We conducted a Jones Building RFQ, and we received five proposals for different developers with different ideas and concepts for developing the Jones Building. Our building department conducted seventeen thousand inspections, and they awarded four hundred and ninety-eight certificates of occupancy. For enhancing historic downtown Canton, we believe preservation, entrepreneurship, arts and culture, and community-centric activities are cornerstones of economic development within downtown Canton. Benefiting the entire city, downtown redevelopment creates jobs, attracts investments, increases property values, and generates tourism. So once again, the Jones Building, we are actively marketing. Our DDA is doing a great job. They're working with proposers, some of these developers that I talked about earlier, on a deal to bring some exciting mixed-use project to the Jones Building, to the space. You'll hopefully be hearing about that in the very near future. The city parking deck, Archer Street Parking Deck, is, design was approved. The contract was signed, and the start of construction has begun, so you can look outside the City Hall and see that progress. We approved a new residential complex at the Mill on Etowah, starting the residential infill in downtown Canton, what we've been looking at for years, sort of heads and beds in downtown to drive support of our downtown businesses. We saw the creation of a beautiful mural on Railroad Street, sort of a walkthrough history of Canton's history. We want to thank Counselor Schmidt for making that mural happen and persisting and insisting and creating that and leading the way on that initiative and others. We created a Canton Arts Commission to really look at the arts throughout the city, all types of arts, and how we can leverage those going forward for tourism and economic development. Again, Chairman, Counselor Schmidt is the liaison for that commission. We continue to see film projects in the City of Canton in downtown. There's lots of interest in our city. Films love to shoot in the City of Canton. Once again, our Main Street, Main Street Canton was voted one of the top ten main streets in all of the country. So that's really, really impressive. So want to thank our Main Street program and our citizen volunteers who do all this great work in our downtown area. We saw, continue to see growth in our award-winning First Friday concerts and festivals. First Friday is consistently listed as the citizens' favorite event in the area. History Cherokee is opening, is working on a world-class regional history museum. It's under construction. They're making great progress. Again, you can see that one block away, so we're excited that this will bring new tourism and visitors and students and school systems to the City of Canton to look at our history and look at these exhibits, so it's a very exciting development. And we saw new downtown beautification projects, working with our Public Works Department, new hanging baskets, new streetlight banners, and new and additional tree lights, which everyone seems to really enjoy in downtown Canton. When we began construction on the Archer Street Parking Deck, we had a family of community roaming cats, and I hope I get that right. And they were gonna be displaced, and so Counselor McGrew was very concerned about that, so she worked with some individuals and with our Public Works Department, and they built a cat- and with our Public Works Department, and they built a caddy shack to feed these cats and house them and, and, and a place for them to lounge and hang out. So I saw the city hall, it's a wonderful structure, and those cats are really just been loving it and, you know, having a good time and a vacation away from their former kudzu fields, so. Our downtown Canton Farmers Market in Brown Park continues to grow and expand, I believe we had over sixty vendors this past year, great food, local growers, food purveyors. Our award-winning Canton Cash Mob Program was started this year, this was a program started by our Downtown Development Director, Belinda Hardy, and it was awarded the number one downtown promotional program in the state of Georgia. We also, Main Street did the Shop Small Business Saturday Program, Christmas in Canton programs and events and, and many others. And moving on to sustaining our natural environment, and we believe Canton residents appreciate our natural beauty, proximity to the mountains, ample green spaces and the Etowah River. Projects in the city will promote interaction with nature through sustainability, stewardship of resources and innovative design. So some things we achieved this past year, we created a new Sustainability Commission that is chaired by our Counselor McGrew, is, is our, our council liaison for that committee. It's an amazing group of talented individuals and citizens with great experience and backgrounds in all areas of sustainability, sustainable development. Kelly Penley is our, our, our team, Team Canton lead on that and is doing a wonderful job, so we're really looking forward to see what all they accomplish for our city. We hired H G O R to do a buffer analysis and landscape review around the reservoir, looked at all the native plant and species and also the invasive species around the reservoir, Lake Canton, actually found no invasive species around the entire lake, which was really unbelievable. We approved not only the parking deck, Archer Street Parking Deck, but this council approved a solar canopy on the top level of the parking deck, which will power ten electric vehicle charging stations and provide energy for, to power city hall. Police Department purchased and are using two electric motorcycles to control our parks and trail system, our trail system is, network has become so extensive that we need those electric motorcycles, and if you're down there misbehaving, you better watch out because they'll sneak up behind you, you can't hear them. We created a new green infrastructure program, which sets new standards to cut down on erosion and increase sustainable development practices. It's Canton's twenty-eighth year being designated as a Tree City. We conducted two public recycling and safe disposal events, we drafted an energy and sustainable sustainability RFP for all of our facilities. We removed a log jam at Waleska Street Bridge, our staff did and did a great job on that. We placed two new beehives with Beekeepers of Canton, of Cherokee County at the Ridge Road Facility. And we collected sixty-two tons of, of rubbish and stuff with our street sweeping initiatives, which kept that all out of our stormwater system and helped keep, you know, keep our water clean, Dave can explain that to you better than I can, so. So connecting citizens to park, parks and recreation, our, our Tenet there says, a healthy community provides access to nature, residents should be connected with local parks through trails, sidewalks, additional transportation options. Recreational opportunities should be available to and inclusive to all. Some of the things we achieved last year, the Etowah Rail, River Trail Expansion East, this, we expanded the trail east from Etowah River Park to I five seventy-five and on to the train trails, basically the east, east limit of our city limits. It's a wonderful extension of our trail system, even before it was officially open, we had citizens out there by the hundreds enjoying that every day. We placed little free libraries in our city parks throughout the city, that was an initiative created and really led by, again, by Counselor Tolan and two, two teachers at Hasty Elementary School. We placed Wi-Fi throughout our city parks, this was, we use CARE Act funding because we believe that all of our citizens, especially our children, should have access to high-speed internet service, so we placed high, high-speed internet services in our parks so that if our children did not have high-speed internet at home, they could go to the park closest to them and have high-speed internet access there. We opened a new plyometric gym at Heritage Park, hopefully you've guys been there and I'm sure you've been using, you all look very buff out there, so. We want to thank Adam Dodson, our Park and Recreation Manager, for pursuing and, and achieving and, and getting awarded a grant for this gym, it's a really great addition to our park. We conducted and achieved some community development block grant improvements at Harmon Park, replaced roofs, did painting, siding, dugout repairs, picnic tables, trash recycling cans and minches. We added property to and we're expanding Harmon Park, which is very exciting, is a park that has not seen a lot of love in, in the past few years. One way we were able to do that, and I want to thank one of our citizens, Mr. Bill Kent, tonight, because he donated some property to help us expand Harmon Park, we appreciate him. We had a new message kiosk at Etowah River Park for our added trail areas. We had, we added a new benchmark program, which was the brainchild of, of Counselor Joel and Wilson, which allows citizens to sponsor a bench in our parks throughout our city in honor of a loved one or someone special in their lives. With the leadership and, and passion of, of Counselor Will Carlin, we began surveying Burge Park and began concept planning to bring that park into this century and do some great improvements at that park, so we're excited to expand that park and see what the possibilities are there in that great neighborhood park. We also used H G O R to do some trail planning concepts for the reservoir, so there's eleven miles, I think there's, there's more than that, around the reservoir, which we're now going to call Lake Canton. It's a wonderful lake that has been sitting there and not really been, been, been used, but we have a trail concept around the entire perimeter of the lake, including overlooks, zip lines, natural education stations for our children, it's, it's really, really exciting and hopefully you'll be hearing a lot about that in the future. We acquired property, another thirty-five acres of, of property on, on the Etowah River at Marietta Highway, and this is property behind the bowling alley and down to Etowah River there for future uses and, and future park and recreational use. Again, we began our trails construction from Heritage Park to Bowling Park. And we created new life jacket stations at Etowah Park, and this was a collaborative effort between Public Works, Parks and Rec and Cherokee Fire and Emergency Services. So moving along to improving infrastructure for future demands, which states, citizens, businesses and visitors need access to the Canton infrastructural network to succeed in their goals. Transportation, power supply, gas availability, water and sewer and digital connectivity are part of building a great network for success. So some of the things we achieved last year, bonds contracting, construction of our water pollution control plant, which is a fancy way of saying our sewer plant, expansion, which we're expanding from four million gallons per day to treating six and eventually seven million gallons per day. This is the largest single project in the city of Canton's history, and we are achieving this through revenue, revenue bonds through the water system itself, which means our water and sewer customers, residential and commercial, will pay for that expansion because of the growth and the added capacity in the system. The bonds were achieved at, with very, very low interest rates at the very, very right time, which are going to save those customers a lot of money in the, in the long term. And as part of the, the bond process, the city, both the city and the water and sewer system received a double A rating, which excellent rating, financial rating from, from those financial institutions, which we're all very proud of. We conducted a traffic study for Reservoir Drive and submitted an L C I application for the West Main Street Corridor, which will eventually connect the mill on Etowah to downtown up the hill, and we want to improve that connection and that, 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 that street there as a pedestrian pathway. We completed five point one miles of paving projects, I think if you ask anyone else and, that doesn't sound impressive, but if you ask anyone Chairman Johnson or anyone else in another city, it, I think it is pretty impressive for our city. We had a contract issued on a citywide transportation plan, we're going to be studying transportation throughout the city. Funding was secured and we contracted for State Road one fifty, one forty Phase One Design, so we're looking at one forty between Walgreens and, and Soleil, Laurel Canyon, Great Sky, we have a lot of traffic issues there, so we're beginning to look at design for those roadway improvements. We secured funding for design utility alignment and construction for Florida T there on State Route one forty and Ron Hock College Parkway intersection. We property acquisition for Old Shoal Creek realignment, and that is where Old Shoal Creek comes in, there at Walmart, I mean Walgreens, again, a huge area of, of traffic congestion. And we're looking at pedestrian improvement design at Marietta Highway and traffic signal design at Teasley Elementary School. We began and made great progress on the old Ball Ground Sewer Expansion, which really goes from, through Heritage Park all the way to Bowling Park and to the Water Pollution Control Plant, and this was something that had to be done as part of our sewer project a few years ago, council went down to City of Columbus to hold our retreat. One of the reasons we went down there is because they have a great river and a great river walk that they've done a lot of work with. We discovered that river walk actually came about because they had a sewer project all along the river, they had to replace a main sewer line. Someone had a bright idea, while they were doing that, why don't we put a trail on top of it? This is exactly what we're doing with the, with the Ball Ground Sewer Expansion, we're putting our trail from Heritage Park to Bowling Park on top of the, on top of the, the sewer expansion line there. Replaced, created new pump station, booster stations at Laurel Canyon and Amos Road. And State Road one twenty, the expansion out of Canton Place, we finished utility relocations there, even though it's, it's a state project, the city had utilities in those locations, we had to relocate those, and we designed and launched and implemented an entire new website for the city. And last but not least, Tenet for Leading with Excellence, and this states that city council, staff and citizen boards will foster civic participation and serve ethically, transparently, responsibly and efficiently. Some things we achieved, of course, our bling, the GMA and Georgia Trend Visionary City Award, which is really kind of icing on the cake for, for our roadmap for success. Our budget approval process for 2021, which maintained the lowest mileage rate in Cherokee County, one of the lowest in the state of Georgia, the lowest since nineteen sixty-two in our city. The year I was born, I just celebrated my sixtieth birthday last week, so that's been a long time, folks, so. We're finding out, I heard today, that we've gone back even further, we're pretty sure that it's the lowest in the city's history, so I think that's pretty impressive, so. And the lowest, all these things we've accomplishing tonight, we still have the lowest mileage rate, so. Our Canton Police Department was awarded recertification from the state, a great achievement. We began a new planning commission process, which gives our citizens more input and advance notice of the, of new projects coming into the city, it cuts out some red tape, it brings the projects direct to city council, because we have the roadmap in place, it gets city council more advanced notice of projects, and it creates community meetings with developers and citizens and neighbors in the area where developers potentially may be going. We created a new process, citizen participation, participation application process for new appointments to boards and commissions, and what this does is we opened up our boards and commissions to, to qualified citizens or interested citizens throughout the city that had not been engaged before, and we discovered a lot of citizens out there with a lot of great talents and abilities and, and people are just waiting to be involved, and so we have a lot of new, fresh ideas and citizens involved in these boards and commissions that have a lot of energy and passion, and we're very excited about that, and they're working alongside people that have contributed and been on boards, commissions for, for years and make great progress. I, I want tonight to thank a couple of members from our DDA who have served, hers as well, their terms were up this year, Mr. Zach Kell, who's term, who served two terms on our DDA, did some great work for us, and Ms. Rebecca Johnson, who served at least three, we think probably more, terms on the DDA and did a great job, provided great leadership as Chair of the DDA, and we're going to be putting her work, to work on a lot of other projects, but we want to thank them for their great work, so. Of course, this, this Tenet involves our ethical practices, so finally after several years of talking about it, we, this council walked their talk and we created and enacted a new ethics ordinance and approved that, and we, we live by it. Our charter, the city Canton Charter, was wrought with inaccuracies, mistakes, some things that probably could, were questionable whether illegal or not, so there are a lot of things in our charter that were, were really not in line with some of our ordinances and things, so we began a council charter review committee chaired by Counselor McGrew. We reviewed the charter in its entirety, we made changes and we adopted those charter changes. We're doing the same thing with our Unified, Unified Development Code, we're reviewing that page by page, and we're looking at that in detail. Same thing with all of our ordinances, we have Unified Development Code, we have ordinances that don't match up and seem, this is a lot of work, and this is, because it's a lot of work, it's been put off and put off and pushed down the road and kicked down the road, but this council is getting it done, ordinance review committee is being chaired by Counselor Carlin. Again, I wanted to, to thank this, this council for rolling up their sleeves and never saying no when, when they're asked to, to, to do this great work. We were looking at, very serious look at blight in our city, and we created a blight review committee chaired by Counselor Tolan, and we're taking some action in that area. We expanded our development review team at the city. And finally, after several years, service delivery strategy negotiations with the county were completed and approved, so we're very excited about that, again, thanks to this council who, who really focused on our citizens, our taxpayers and, 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 you know, what they needed in, in these negotiations, but also working with the county and other cities to finally get this done. I want to thank our two delegates in particular, who worked with delegates from other cities and the county to get this across the finish line, and that's Counselor Joel and Wilson and former Counselor Nick Estes to get this done. We relaunched our Canton, Citizens Police Academy, and Mr. Dwight Waterman, Duane Waterman is a former, a former graduate of the Police Academy, so we're going to put his skills to good work and he's going to be our new liaison to the Public Safety Committee. Our staff here at city hall conducted a homeless veteran blanket drive in, in November and collected over two hundred blankets for homeless veterans. Belinda Hardy worked with Northside Cherokee Hospital and launched a Think Pink Event, which, Think Pink Event, which was a walk for breast cancer survivors, and we had quite a big turnout for that. And once again, the city had a lot of events to celebrate Georgia Cities Week. We also looked at our staff incentives, our staff's been working very hard, the last two years have not been easy on anyone, but especially our staff who've been The last two years have not been easy on anyone, but especially our staff who've been showing up and working despite all the circumstances that have been going on. We had a one-time ad, ad pay for staff with, using our ARPA funds. We created vaccination, COVID vaccination incentives for our staff and COLA increases for our staff. Our council had a, when we finally felt it was safe enough, we had a spring council retreat and looked at our roadmap and, and where we're going and, and what our priorities were. We began ward check-in meetings, and so the week of, the week of every council meeting, we, we check in ward by ward and we, we, we talk about the agenda, what we're going to be looking at, and, and just try to communicate better. I try to communicate better with council. And we received, the city received the 20th consecutive award of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. I want to thank and applaud our finance director, Melissa Forrester, and her team for that astounding achievement. And the city onboarded 24 new hires in 2021. So those eight tenants, some of the things we accomplished in that, so completing our roadmap. We, again, it's a 15-year plan that we began, started 2021. We have some really ambitious projects that we want to complete over that 15 years. We're really excited that, we are anticipating completing the majority of those 15-year projects within the next three years, so this council is working hard. We are going on retreat next weekend to really look and how we can build on last year's success, how we can follow through to complete some of these projects, how we can anticipate new projects and plan accordingly, and how we continue to measure and increase accountability with some roadmap metrics. So let's talk about this year. We can't rest on the laurels, like I say. We've got a lot of projects that we're going to complete this year. These are the things that we know about, these are things that are in the roadmap, and this is not, you know, the curveballs that are going to be thrown to us, you know, probably every week, every day. So we'll be in the very near future initiating our tax allocation district discussions with Cherokee County and the school district. And so the city's already approved, the tax allocation district will be applying our taxes, dedicating our taxes to improvement projects in that district with partnership with Cherokee County and the school district. We'll be able to do so much more in this area, so we're excited to, to hopefully get the partnership with them. I think we will. City's going to hire a Housing and Residential Services manager to look at all of our housing needs and innovating housing projects in the city. It's become a, a big need, and we're going to, you know, bring the people on board who can really accomplish that for us. We plan to complete the Archer Street parking deck by August, which is a, you know, very vast course. We're going to complete the Etowah River Trail westward from Heritage Park to Bowling Park, again, by August. We're anticipating by August, you know, depending on weather and all, but by that time, all three of our parks along, major parks along the river will be connected, and you'll be able to go from city limit to city limit on one trail. It's a very exciting achievement. And we were hoping to open our mini pitch soccer field that we received a grant from Atlanta United for in Harmon Park by the end of summer. The 325 acres that we bought, purchased at the Bluffs, we, this was the remaining 325 acres available at the Bluffs. So it was intended for a, a tech park, you know, back when tech marks were, you know, a thing. They're not really a thing anymore, but, and so, so that property was kind of developing in a kind of haphazard manner, so the City of Canton purchased 325 acres remaining up there. A lot of it's around the reservoir, so we could, to protect the reservoir for recreational uses for, for our citizens. But also, there's a lot of land there that can be developed in a very innovative way that we're looking at, so we're going to create a master plan to make sure that that property develops in a very, very advantageous way for our city and for our citizens. We will, in the very near future, issue our first liquor package license. We are doing this by sealed bids. We actually opened sealed bids last week for our first liquor store license. We had 24 bids ranging up to $1.2 million for the first license. We will, we're going to request proposal for sanitation services. Our contract with our sanitation provider will end the next fiscal year, so we're looking at RFPs for new, new providers or new services. Educational program at Canton Theater for Summer Cats will begin. We will complete our transportation master plan citywide this year. We will look at, we'll complete our design for the State Route 140 Phase One at Marietta Highway in Riverstone. We will install our traffic signal at Teasley Middle School. A lot of parents will be happy about that, especially Ms. Schmidt. Our police department will deploy brand-new, state-of-the-art Taser 7 models. Chief can tell you all about these and, and why they're great. We will conduct and hold our second multicultural festival, which will be bigger and better, more food, more music. We'll complete our old ground, Ball Ground Sewer Line expansion and the trail on top of it. We'll continue our water pollution control plan expansion, which we're expecting to be able to meet a six-million-gallon-per-day treatment capacity by next summer, on time, on budget. Burge Park Improvement Concepts, we will review those and decide a very positive path forward this year, hopefully very soon this year. And you'll see the construction of restrooms and playground, new playground equipment at Heritage Park in the very near future. We're going to be installing Sunnyside kiosks, communication kiosks, and Harmon Circle sidewalk projects around the new expanded Harmon Park. And the transportation project for the Florida T design at Reinhardt College Parkway and 140. We will complete the Riverstone Pedestrian Crosswalk Study and submit that to Georgia DOT. This, if you're familiar, the crosswalk across Riverstone around the Ingalls Shopping Center. We've had a lot of issues, safety issues with pedestrians crossing there. It's very, very dangerous. Talked about it for years. We were looking at it, we're studying it. We're going to come up with a plan and submit it to DOT and get that done. We will launch a housing trust fund in the city to help move, help get people more and, create more homeownership, especially first-time homeowners. We will, the, the Public Arts, Arts Commission is working on a public arts master plan to see how we move forward with arts throughout the city. Shortly after we return next weekend from our council retreat, council will be holding a joint meeting with all of our boards and commissions to talk about our roadmap, where we're going, what we're trying to accomplish, and how we're all going to work better together to make that happen. We'll begin very soon, I met with Chairman Johnson just the other day, on a new SPOSS negotiation and referendum, which will be on, on the ballot in the fall, identifying, we already know some SPOSS projects that our citizens want because of the roadmap process and the, the feedback that it gave us, so we're excited about that. We'll begin issuing letters of sewer availability for the projects that have been waiting on this by the end of this month, because by the time they start, they won't be done until the capacity is available, so we're excited to get some of these projects underway. We'll begin to launch a small business grants to small businesses throughout the city and new business startups. We will, we are determined to achieve ARC Green Community, Green Communities Certification by the end of the year. Kelly's going to make sure we do that, and our Sustainability Commission is really focused on that. We will launch a Canton Tourism website promoting tourism in Canton and all the great products that we have to offer here. We will create a request for proposal for innovative housing design at Laurel Canyon. This is two acres at Laurel Canyon that we had purchased a few years ago for a possible fire station. As you know, we've consolidated our fire services with Cherokee County, so that is no longer needed for a fire station, so we're going to take that two, two acres. We're going to receive concepts for innovating housing studies, whether it's small homes or micro cottages. How many they can fit on that two acres, and can they all be solar-powered with community guards or whatever? So we're going to award that project and then use that as a footprint, and, and anyone in two acres, you know, throughout the city can pick that up and, and move it throughout the city for some innovative housing. Our wards have been needing, a need of redistricting for a very long time. Many of you know that Ward Two, which used to be the largest ward, is now by far the smallest ward, so we need to redistrict those. We're waiting on census information. We have that now, so we will, by the end of this year, conduct and, and finish the redistricting of all three wards. We will enact our co-compliance concentrated enforcement program. We have that ready to go, and we'll be launching that soon. Our, we will complete our Etowah River Buffer Study, and we'll update that housing study with the newest data points from the census information. We'll complete the ordinance and Unified Development Code updates. These two committees are working very quickly and very hard. We will complete the Riverstone Pedestrian Plan. We will begin a recreation master plan for the city. We will be adding bike racks, playground equipment, and signage in all parks. We will launch our Historic Neighborhood Program, and we will improve our downtown sanitation program for all downtown businesses and merchants, and especially our restaurants who've just kind of struggled to how they handle their, their sanitation programs, so. So. There you have a short list of notable accomplishments from last year and substantial, some substantial priorities and promises of 2022. I hope you're as proud as I am of Canton tonight. We truly live in a great city, friends. Its greatness is not because we don't have challenges, it's, it's because we don't run away from them, and it's because we learn from them. Whether roadmap, roadmap is our guide, our council, staff, boards, commissions, businesses, and residents collaborate and work together on a daily basis to be better than we were the day before. As acknowledged by leaders across the state, Canton is not only accomplishing great things for our city, we're even leading the way in setting the bar for excellence throughout Georgia. Our city is in a great state, but each day brings new opportunities to sharpen our focus on its future. We recognize that the decisions we make today will shape the lives of future generations in Canton for people such as Sophia, Laney, McKenzie, and our other young citizens. I consider it a great honor and privilege to serve as mayor of our city in such a transformational time. I assure you that your mayor, council, and Team Canton will continue to work day and night to meet the challenges of today and prepare the city to fulfill its future potential. However, your elected officials cannot do this on your own, on our own. Tonight, I ask all of you, our citizens and businesses, to join me in celebrating our successes and embracing the challenges ahead as we work together to create and maintain the highest level quality of life in the coolest small town in America, today and for generations to follow. Thank you.
Somebody talked a long time. So with that out of the way, we will call our February 3rd City Council Meeting to order. At this point, we will consider approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or changes to the agenda? We have a motion?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. All members voted for the motion. Tonight, we have guests and visitors of Cherokee County. We have Chairman Johnson, and I think a couple of them, I'm not sure who's presenting, but they're here to make a presentation on the Cherokee County Parking Deck update. Welcome, happy to have you here. It's an honor to have you.
First, let me say congratulations and thank you for the excellent state of our great city. It's clear that the future is capable in good hands. Thank you for that, and thank you for having us back tonight to talk about this matter again. As you know, the, the county needs to expand the Justice Center here in Canton, and step one of that is to provide additional parking at a different location so that we can tear down ultimately the small parking deck behind the Justice Center and use that space for expansion of the building itself. We came to you and presented a plan to, which is the original base plan, to build a parking deck behind the historic courthouse in a, in a look that somewhat blends with and matches the marble look of the two buildings, primary buildings on that site now. I guess the best way I would characterize your reaction was you gave us feedback that that was acceptable. You didn't say you loved it, but it was acceptable. But we began to get feedback pretty quickly, pointing out flaws or issues with that design. First, it was just about the, the look of the facade, and we said, well, we can, we can deal with that, we can make it look like something else if, if that's better. But then really, it, it didn't take long before it was more than that. The, the size of the, of the building there on that relatively small footprint would have to be tall. It would, to some degree, dwarf the, and, and minimize the grandeur of the historic courthouse that's there now. It would perhaps negatively affect the, the view shed from the downtown square, and maybe more, most importantly, it would visually and even physically block the historic cemetery and art center building that are behind it. Most notably, as it's designed and with that small space there, it would be necessary to literally drive through the parking deck to access the cemetery and the art center building. And really, that just doesn't fit with the, with the respectful dignity of a funeral procession, as, has been pointed out to us. So we began looking at other options. Another option that we have pursued would be buying the site of the current North Street apartment complex, demolishing those buildings, and putting, putting a parking deck there just east of the current courthouse complex. That's a larger footprint, it could be a lower building. Stacy Williams, our Administrative Services Director, is going to show you what that looks like and what the sighting and layout would be for that. But one more thing from me before that, and that's just to say that our, our Board of Commissioners is determined that we would not want to go forward with that site unless equal or better housing in this same vicinity and at comparable prices would be available, guaranteed to the tenants of that building. We're, we are not going to buy that building and evict tenants without a good and nearby place for them to go. So with that said, let's let Stacy Williams present to you what this building would look like and how it would fit, and I'm going to sit down, but if you have further questions for me, certainly I'll come back. Thank you so much again for having us.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for having us back again to present. We were with you this summer. So just to recap from the summer, you, you saw from last summer this slide, which is total footprint, and Chairman Johnson had mentioned, you see the red and yellow arrows, that is the entrance and exit that he was speaking of, of driving through the parking deck that goes to the back, which, you know, was just not necessarily that most desirable location for that. But this was our design, and you see the annex building to the right with the future expansion some 20 years or 25 years down the road. And you can see the two darker green areas, and I apologize, the pointer won't hit on the slide, but that's a, a tight site between the two locations, and so we kind of had to set that annex building, that rectangle shape, to be able to get it to fit on our current property. And then after the presentation in the summer, we came back, and, and this is a rendering of a street view, of course, at a six-story. The original presentation I did last summer was seven stories. This is the, what it would look like at six stories with the security, uh, security pavilion in front of the current Justice Center and then the historic courthouse. And then this is just a color rendering of the parking deck after completion, the full project with the annex building, the security pavilion, the covered walkway coming from the elevator shaft there on the parking deck. But as Chairman Johnson said, you know, we got feedback, and, and so we began to think, you know, of a different location, and he mentioned North Street Apartments. And so we, here's a rendering of, of 500-plus spaces. This is a four-story deck that has 15,000 square foot of office space along the, the front, elevator shaft or public entrance there to the left, the green. It has the lower left, you see an arrow, that That is exit only coming out from the bottom floor, which would be below grade, to a entry and exit, the annex. That's where the judge is parking, we're going to the annex. So there'll be a road going down through there once the annex is built. It has street pavers according to, I think, the city's standards. It has landscaping along the front. You see to the far right, it has an entry and exit going in off of North Street. There'll be parallel parking along the front. But we got to thinking about that. And as, you know, coming into, from North Street, the first thing you see coming into Canton would be a parking deck. And so we thought, well, how can we make a parking deck not look like a parking deck, even though that's what it's going to be to some extent? So we went back to our architects, and this is what they came up with. And as you can see, that very much matches the current or the old Jones Building. The, the lower level, street level being the offices on the front, parking would be behind that. The darker glass right above that is the second story. And then the very top is actually the third story. But as you can see, it only looks two stories from the street. This being the elevator shaft here in the front, the public entrance. And so just as you can see, we took pictures of the old, the, the architects did, took pictures of the old Jones Building. You can see to the far right, and we mimicked those corbels at the top and made it look like that. Now, this can change in color. That is actual brick, not the brick wafers, they call, that we were going to use on the original site. This is all brick. And like I said, any type of color coordination would work. We just, for this particular rendering, mimic the Jones Building. And you can see at the bottom, on the bottom picture, the entry and exit off of North Street to the far right. And then that taller shaft would be the stairwell. And so these two views here, the bottom one being, if you're looking from the street facing the parking deck, this is the back right corner. So this is, you see the below-grade bottom level. Next level up would be the street level. Next level up would be the dark windows and then, of course, the very top. The top has a wall, and I'll show you in just a minute, tall enough to where you should not, from the street, be able to see a vehicle from the street. There's going to be a wall, and I'll show you that here in just a second. Which is the last slide, it's a very brief presentation. This is the last aerial. And you can see in the, in the top right-hand corner, that darker shade, that is the wall that comes all the way around, that's high enough to cover most all vehicles that would be able to get in there. So anything real tall wouldn't be able to get to the top floor anyway. And then you can see down at the bottom left, that darker area, that's the exit on the, the lower grade. And the roof is green just for this render. But like I said, colors, we can do anything. It doesn't necessarily matter one way or another. So very quick presentation, but that just, you know, we just wanted to come and kind of give you an idea of what it would look like. From some feedback that I've gotten, I, I've heard that that looks like an old school. And I've heard that it does look similar to old mill buildings, you know, depending on the color of the brick. So I think we accomplished what we're trying to accomplish. And, and that is building a parking deck that doesn't necessarily look like a, just a plain concrete parking deck, that that matches the historic look of downtown. So with that being said, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. As I, as I mentioned, the state of the city, we, we are holding a council retreat next weekend. I know this will probably be a, a big topic of that retreat. But prior to that, does anyone have any questions tonight? Mr. Carlin?
Thank you for being here. The, this new design that you have with the brick that you see here on this rendering, could the parking deck behind the old courthouse look the same way?
I would say so, yes.
Was there a plan at one time to shorten the parking deck behind the old courthouse that would allow the funeral procession to drive around it?
There has been some alternates drawn to, to, to make that look differently, yes.
And does the county met with any residents of North Street Apartments to talk about their feelings about it?
Not to my knowledge, no, sir.
That would be my question. We did meet with, with two that we thought might be representative of the rest. It would be our intention to meet with the rest. The, the development of the replacement apartments is, is ongoing, but it's not, it's something I've been asked not to talk about because of the ongoing nature of it. So really, all I can say is that that's something that, an attempt is being made to put something together there. And when there's something a little firmer, we would like to meet with all of them, have pledged to meet with all of them and get their feedback on it. The first two, of course, told us, you know, no, we don't want to move. But when we said, well, what would it take to make you willing? You know, we, we, in fact, got to a list of if it was this, 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 and this, we could live with it. And so that's, that's the kind of thing that we would hope to do with substantially all. I doubt we'll get 100% people saying they want it, but we would want to make it something that is not onerous to the people who live there.
With the, is there not a concern? The concern seems to be the view from the cemetery and willing to displace people who are currently living in affordable apartments due their age, to displace them from this, where they are now because to work on the view for the cemetery. Is there not a similar concern about the view from the cemetery with the annex being built the way that you have here? Why is that view not considered? Or is it just about the displacement of these folks?
I'm not aware of how this would affect the view of the cemetery.
I encourage you to step back to the cemetery then and have a look at how it would look coming off that corner. Because right there where you have these trees to the right of the art center, there's graves back there, and there's a view to that.
You're talking about the annex, the actual?
I'm talking about your annex to the building and where that would cut in. I mean, that seems to be a, we seem to be picking and choosing the view we care about. And here, we're displacing people.
Yeah. Well, again, it, it would not be our intention to displace anyone. In fact, if it came to that, we would rather just go with the original plan. As much as there are issues with that, we're not going to be the ones who force somebody out of a home and without a suitable to them place to go at, at a comparable price. We really don't have, Stacy could speak to this if you have any other, but I don't. I don't, I don't think we have another plan for a way to expand that building other than behind the current one.
We do not. That, that is the, the, really the only location to put an annex that we can connect to the current building. But more than half of what you're seeing there is the current parking deck.
That's right. Thank you very much. I appreciate you doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for us?
Questions at this time?
Thanks again so much for sharing.
Thank you, appreciate, appreciate your time. Thanks for coming. Before we get into the business portion of our meeting, we have two public hearings to conduct this evening. Mr. Peppers, do you want to briefly review the guidelines? You don't have to go through all of them, but briefly.
Absolutely. So with the public hearing, the, the rules for the public hearing, we'll have staff give a brief presentation of the case, introduce the case. Then we'll have the applicant and those in favor of the case, they'll have 10 minutes to present. I'll be the timekeeper for that. If you are here to speak for or against the case, you should have signed up. There's a, a form that you need to fill out. Once we have gone through the, the, those in favor, then we will call on those that are opposed. They'll have an opportunity to speak. And I'll keep the time, 10 minutes total. And if, if you are speaking, try to keep your comments concise. That way you don't interrupt someone else that might be looking for time as well. And make sure that you address the council during the public hearing portion of the case. The council will not ask questions. Once the public hearing is concluded and the mayor calls the public hearing to a close, then the council may discuss the case and ask questions of staff. Is that good enough?
It's good enough. Great job. So we'll begin with our first public hearing. It's a public hearing and discussion of rezoning and master plan approval request from Rob Beecham for three, 33.23 acres along Dr. John T. Pettit Longview and Cherokee Streets for the development of 124 residential unit subdivision. Mr. Green?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You pretty well summed it up there in a nutshell. Mr. Beecham is applying for the rezoning to rezone their property from R-20 to PDR Plan Development Residential. Asking for that category is what kicks in his requested master plan as master plans are required with plan development of zoning categories. And as you stated, it's 33.23 acres. His plan now reflects 124 single-family attached and detached homes. We have received comments from three citizens here in town, Mr. Owens, Mr. Strickland, and Ms. Stanton. The gist of Mr. Beecham's development is a low-impact development where he is seeking some alternatives, uh, design standards in terms of street design, elimination of sidewalks, wastewater control, stormwater runoff. And he is here tonight to present his, his proposal and his request. And if you have any questions of staff, either myself or Mr. Patton, we'll be glad to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Green. So at this point, we will open the public hearing for this case. And we will ask the applicant, Mr. Beecham, I assume, will want to begin. Comments on the, in favor of the?
Good evening, council and mayor and staff. Appreciate the opportunity to come share with you what we've been working on for a few months now. But just want to say how excited we are at being a part of such a progressive city. One of the things that drew us to wanting to be involved in the city of Canton was the roadmap to success. And we don't see that kind of forward-thinking very often. And so I just want to commend you on the work you've done with that. I ran off and forgot my glasses, so this is going to be fun tonight. The tenants' roadmaps, you went through them. But I listed them on there because we feel like that our project, as we've tried to look at the design and, and the ideas that we've had, we tried to address and make sure that we were in line with the tenants' roadmaps. I also spent quite a bit of time studying the housing study along with the Canton 2040 project, Canton 2040 study. I won't go through all of the comments that were put into those studies, but sort of, most of them included demand for additional housing, in-town housing, efficient, efficiency, feasibility of land uses, mixed use, revised land use regulations and supporting new land uses that contribute to protecting the environment. So we feel like that what we're presenting to you is, meets all of the goals of, of those studies that you spent quite a bit of time establishing. So let me jump right into the project. I want to tell you just a little bit about myself and my family. So we're a family business. I grew up in Roswell. I'm a fourth-generation builder here in Atlanta. My dad is my partner. He's 82, he's sitting back there. And he was the third generation. And then two of my, two of our three children worked with us. And my son Xander is the fifth generation. We are a family business. And when we come into a community, we feel like we're investing in the community and we have a vested interest in the community. And we understand when we come that we have the ability to impact the city for the better, for good, or as a negative impact. And our goal has always been to be, to bring positive impact. And to the point that we've recently purchased property on 131 West Marietta where we're relocating our offices. So you need to, you're probably a little bit crazy to locate your office across the street from where you're developing property because you set yourself up for lots of comments. And, but we do that intentionally because we are very transparent. And when we make mistakes, we're here to, you know, correct them and do what we can. That's a little bit about us. I believe you've had a chance to read, read through the core values in our mission and vision statement. But those are not things that we hired a marketing company to come up with. Those were birthed from 60-plus years of my father building and passing it on to me and me passing it on to my children. So these are things that, that are near and dear to us and that we operate our, our family business with. When we first came to, when I first came to Canton about a year ago to, at the invite of a friend, we looked at two areas that we thought had great opportunity and presented great opportunity. And that was, I, I didn't know that these studies had been done and I didn't have the vocabulary. But we looked at the, the upper blue dot, I called that the hill. And that basically was the, the old cotton mill housing and then the Marietta Street corridor. So we've been focusing our efforts at bringing improvement and beautification to those areas. Sanctuary the community. I'm not going to be able to read that to you tonight because I have my glasses in. But those are a lot of the features. So we're, we're very innovative in what we do. And when we looked at that piece of property, typical developer would come in, buy that land and flatten it, you know, flatten it out like a pancake, take down every tree and not work with the topography. And we envisioned the project that worked with the natural topography that would preserve as much of the trees and the natural beauty of the land. To the point that every single house, we've had to rethink how we're building. So we're building houses now on multiple levels that will conform to the existing topography. We plan on featuring items like gray water waste on-site treatment for each individual house, which potentially cuts the, the amount of sewage that comes out of each house by up to 50%. And I know that's a, that's a current topic with the city spending $65 million on, you know, an expansion. So we think that's just a great, a great way to support future growth of the community. Gosh, I can't read that. But I know you guys have all had to read. But our company is focused on quality. We build great projects. The neighborhood will be high attention to detail. We plan on an owners' club that'll have multiple amenities and will just be a wonderful place to live. This is the community overall master plan. After several meetings with local citizens and city staff and some of the council people, we originally had four entrances into the project. And we have, back down now to just one primary entry, which is on Dr. John Pettit. The entrances on East Cherokee and Longview will only be emergency exit only, and they won't be opened up until the end of the project. So they will no longer be used as construction entrances. We've heard some of the concerns of the citizens. And we're going to put a second entrance off of Dr. John Pettit as an exclusive construction entrance for the entirety of the project. So we want to limit the exposure to the neighboring community with a disruption that we know we bring. Again, the project, the entire site was designed around the existing topography with an effort to have minimal impact. We were able to preserve, even with the, the density that we're proposing, up to 33% of the land is untouched. That is one of the, the thoughts behind new urbanism is, is compacting development is in, in smaller spaces and preserving the natural environment around them. The special, special considerations, and I think, we've proposed narrower streets. I didn't say narrow streets, but narrower streets. Pavement is one of the biggest impervious spaces in, in development. And the more impervious structures that we put in, the more we have to deal with stormwater runoff. And so it's a very green practice to have narrower streets or the narrower rightaways. We've been proposing walking trails for the sidewalks. Again, sidewalks present a, a great deal of impervious space in the traditional neighborhood. And with the rolling topography of this particular project, we feel like walking trails and walking paths are the way to connect neighbors. We'll be using limited, or we're proposing to use, to use limited curb and gutter, a single entrance on Dr. John Pettit and then a separate construction entrance on Dr. John Pettit so that we can maintain vehicle cleaning. So that's why we always want to have a, a separate construction entrance is because we set up a washout bay and, and hoses and, and areas that when trucks come in and out, they're not, we're minimizing the mud and impact. they're not, uh, we're minimizing the mud and impact on the local streets. As I mentioned earlier, we've had to rethink how we build, specifically for this piece of property, and this is a, a side depiction of how the, the roads, you have an up, upper road, and the roads drop down as the contours drop, and they run parallel with the contours. So you can see how, um, we're able to build up the hill in essence. And what this allows us to do, because the only heavy equipment grading is gonna be on the lower portion of the garage, rest of the lot will be hand-cleared, which allows us to keep trees in between homes when normally, um, use of heavy equipment impacts the root zones. Uh, these are some more of the homes that are being specifically developed for this project. Th- this is more of a, 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 uh, a better look at how the construction will, uh, will take place. So the only part of the house actually touching the ground is the garage portion. Rest of the home is on a traditional pier and beam, uh, construction. Um, one of the, um, weapons that we use with stormwater runoff is flow wells, and we've used these for years. Capture all the water from a home, and home is the other, the second largest impervious structure on any, in, in any development is a home, and by capturing all of the rainwater in gutters and putting it back into a flow well, we're able to put the wor- the water back at where it should be.
Sorry, Mr. Green?
Am I out of time?
Yep, your time's up.
Okay. Thank you.
We had three citizens sign up to speak. I'm not sure if anyone, um, signed up to speak in support, but if you did, you can let me know when I read your name, uh, but we will open up to, to people who are opposed to project. Um, Mr. Dan Owen?
Mr. Owen, if you'll just state your name and address to start off, thank you.
Yeah, I'm, uh, Dan Owen, six fifty Longview Street. Uh, I've sent three letters. Uh, I don't intend to reread those or go over them. I, I sign up really more for discussion. I guess the discussion is between y'all, not between us. Uh, but, uh, if there's any questions, I, basically, I like the, the concept. Uh, I'm opposed to the amount of density, uh, that the tad project called for seventy units on this, uh, area, which I thought was pretty high. We're almost double that. Um, I don't like some of the streets being, um, dead-end, and, uh, I don't like the idea that, that you're gonna be driving along view and you're gonna look up and you're gonna see the backs of these houses instead of the fronts of houses as we're used to seeing on, on a regular residential street. That's just kind of some basics, but, uh, and then I'm also, I don't know if I get a second chance, but the, um, the railroad street, uh, project that's coming up, I'll just mention it while I'm here, that, uh, I think that you need to look at the, um, intersection of those streets before you consider.
Yeah, Mr. Owen, you, uh, can't, that's a separate case, so you can't speak.
We need to keep those separate for a record.
Yes.
So, so come back, come back.
Do I get another chance to come up there? I don't know how this thing works, it's all confusing to me. But anyway, uh, that, that's all I have, but any, any questions or response from anything I've sent? I'm, I'm assuming maybe the other letters will actually get attached. The first one did, the others were late, so, uh, I don't know what the, um, I didn't know what the timetable was as far as getting things in, but, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Owen. Mr. Thomas Weaver?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Thomas Weaver. I reside at one thirty-one Old Marietta Road, which is part of the Sunnyside community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me to speak, and, um, I'd just like to share a sincere concern that I have with the project that's been proposed to you. Um, it's always good, consistent in approbation of what the mayor said with Canton's roadmap. It's always good to see that there are developers and others who want to invest in our community and create housing options that are sustainable, and that's a good thing. And I think I've echoed that sentiment in other public hearings, uh, last year. Uh, however, I would just invite council to recall, in September of last year, council approved the ten-ten Marietta Road development for a hundred and, I believe, fifty-six units, and now for this development is proposed a hundred and twenty-four more. I think that instead of hitting the gas on everything, council would be more apt to perhaps smash the brakes just a little bit. Longview Road that borders this, uh, develop, this proposed development, and also Dr. John to Pettit Street can't handle the traffic. The Marietta Road corridor is already stressed out in the morning. There's inadequate infrastructure that's in place to be able to handle the traffic congestion as is. The two new developments, the one that's already been approved by you as a council, and now this development, when you take into consideration that the average American household has about two cars per household, I just, I, I worry, and I, I think that I would be remiss if I failed to share my, my sincere concerns aloud, that maybe if council put the horse in front of the cart instead of the cart in front of the horse, maybe infrastructure first, because it's not the developers' teams that's gonna be responding in the case of an accident, or in the case of how are we gonna get water or sewer to these developments, which I believe a developer concedes won't be available anyway until mid-two thousand twenty-three or later. There's just different things that I would ask council to really look at and think before we just start putting more and more. Although I do acknowledge that Sunnyside needs a much-needed facelip, and new housing is certainly a way to develop and attract that type of investment that you're looking for, and that's great, that's what it needs, but do it smartly. Just putting it in there, just to put it in there for, in their sake, I, I just worry that the infrastructure's not there to adequately handle the development that's been presented when you add it to the other developments that you already approved. It's just too much, but that's just my humble opinion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Jerry Urbey, if I mispronounced that, correct me when you get up. And, uh, please state your name and address.
Yes, sir. Uh, my name is Jerry Urbey, six nine nine Longview, uh, Street, uh, Canton. Um, I, I'd just like to tag on to the other two gentlemen, uh, the way they, the items they brought up and, and bring up one other thing. I mean, just to put a number around the gentleman's about the extra traffic, I mean, we're talking probably at maximum, another two hundred and forty-eight cars are gonna hit block in the morning every day. The existing roadways that they're not capable of handling, period. Okay? The second thing I'm gonna bring up, again, I'm just, Dan did a great job of sort of overlaying some of my concerns, um, is the other concern is I have, if we go ahead and, and change the zoning in that area from R, from R twenty to PDI, um, what's gonna keep other developers, as people sell out along Longview Drive and Cherokee Street and Pettit, from also wanting to change the zoning more and more and more? Okay? Um, it's been R twenty forever. I mean, I moved here, here seven years ago just because it was R twenty, and because I have, you know, a, a nice lot and a nice area, and it's a quiet place, and, and we don't want to add and stress it anymore. Now, I get the, I get the idea and understand why it's so attractive. It's proximity to downtown Canton as well as five seventy-five, uh, makes it very attractive, you know, for the projects and the things that you guys are trying to do. I understand that, and development is inevitable. All I'm saying is I'm not against development, but I, my vote is just leave it R twenty, leave it two houses per acre as it is today, okay? And build some nice homes in there and develop that area, um, you know, with all the prerequisites that everybody has laid out. Um, so, um, I also have in my hand, uh, one of our neighbors, um, uh, the hills, uh, were not able to make, they're, they're elderly and they're ill, but I also have a letter that they, they typed up today that they'd also like to have entered in the record. I'm not sure who to give that to, I, I didn't realize.
Mr. Green?
I didn't realize that we had such a short window. So, um, those are the comments that I have to make, and again, um, I really think that we'd be making a mistake. We need to have managed development, not over, overgrowth. We have examples in front of us right now of what not to do, okay? We lived in Woodstock for thirty years and watched them destroy Woodstock. Do we really want that here? Okay? We want managed growth. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. That's all the, uh, citizens we had signed up to speak, so at this point, we will close the public hearing and open up to council for discussion. Ms. Wilson?
Um, I'm just going to, uh, ask some questions that were asked by the Development Services area.
Okay. Let me ask those of Mr. Green.
That says, number one, a traffic study will be required. Number two, a flood study will be required because it's in the flood plain. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Green? Dead-end streets are not allowed?
I'm not sure how, uh, the length of the dead-end street is. That has a lot to do with, um, emergency vehicles.
The site plan does show some dead-end streets, and I noticed in the Development Services says dead-end streets are not allowed. Is that correct?
There are several dead-end streets on this site plan, for sure.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Patton?
If I might add, Counselor Wilson, uh, uh, dead-end streets, if they meet certain requirements for the provision of, uh, public safety services and distances with hoses, uh, would be allowed, but for the most part, they are limited. Uh, that would be part of the engineering design work, uh, that would be ongoing, uh, that would have to be satisfied if council were to approve, uh, the zoning master plan this project move forward.
Right. So, so the dead, if there were dead-end streets allowed, they would have to accommodate public service turnarounds and that sort of thing?
Yes, there are distance requirements, uh, for, uh, the public safety services, uh, vehicles to have access and, uh, the ability to turn around.
Okay. Um, how about the fifty-foot right-of-way that is required? That has not been shown on the site plan.
That is a part of the master plan, uh, that is companion with the zoning. He is requesting a consideration for forty-foot right-of-way instead of the fifty-foot right-of-way.
So that would be?
City standard is fifty feet.
Right. That would be something that we would need to determine, if we would allow forty feet right-of-way.
Yes, ma'am. Like Mr. Patton said, that's one of the considerations for development that goes along with the master plan request.
Right. Um, the low-impact development is new to, to me, um, and, and I appreciate it, but I wanted to know, how do we know that that will be maintained properly, and, because it requires more maintenance than a typical stormwater system? Would we be able to, uh, require them to present a plan to us as to how they're going to handle the low-impact, um, development, this low-impact development?
Yes, ma'am. That can be something that can be asked of the developer to present, uh, to the staff, and of course, we can share it with you, uh, prior to the meeting on the seventeenth. Uh, there's also exists a possibility, if you approve this, that conditions could be placed on the property where the developer would present his maintenance plan. Uh, one of the things that comes to mind is the, uh, porous pavings, and over time, if they're not maintained, all the little, I'll say porous holes will get filled in with, you know, little debris and, you know, particles, and it's no longer porous, you will have a, a sheet runoff then as opposed to the stormwater seeping into the ground. Um, so, and I know that we have one of those issues going on here in town right now.
Right. I just have one other question. Um, how do, how do, how are we defining gray water?
According to Mr.
As, as, as it concerns us with this development. I know what it is, but how about with this development, they have told us that they're going to use the gray water, so how are we defining gray water?
Uh, according to Mr. Beecham's plan, it would be the water that would come, uh, out of the, uh, bathrooms in terms of the showers, the sinks, uh, kitchen sinks, dishwashers, uh, of course, anything from the toilet facilities would go into the sewer system.
And they're proposing that that not go through the sewer system, but through their, their design for a, uh, maintenance of that, right?
Of the gray water.
Right. The gray water?
Would be maintained on, on each individual lot. That's of the plan, as Mr. Beecham has, uh, proposed.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. On the, the, the streets and the narrow right-of-ways, are they being, is it being proposed as a, as private streets?
Yes, sir.
Gated?
I don't think so at this time.
Are you gonna gate them?
Gate the streets?
Okay. Yes, yes, I'm gate. No questions? Ms. McGrew?
Have the hydraulics tests, percolation tests been done yet?
No, ma'am.
No. Uh, would council be expected to approve this project before these tests are done?
It could be possible that you could ask for those tests to be, um, done and presented to the council before you take any type of action, a voting action on the matters.
If the condition of the soil does not allow for the gray water to percolate down, um, how will he solve this problem?
Then he may be required to develop the property with the city standards in terms of, uh, curb and gutter, uh, traditional detention ponds where the water would flow into. Uh, those would be some engineering issues that would be addressed, uh, at the time of, uh, land disturbance permit if this gets approved. Uh, also, they would be required to, uh, connect to a sanitary sewer.
Does staff have any, uh, reservation of council approving a project and then changing the developer having to change what they thought they were going to do?
If the mayor and council had some concerns about that, it might be possible to condition it to return to council for consideration, um, being developed under our standard construction specifications.
Okay. Um, I understand the project is proposed to not have curb and gutter. Where will the rainwater go?
In theory, according to Mr. Beecham, it would absorb into the pavement, being, uh, the porous asphalt, uh, would seep under the asphalt into the ground. Other, other water runoff, since there's no curb and gutter or sidewalk, would of course filter off onto either side of the roadway and, uh, be absorbed into the ground.
Okay. Um, stormwater runoff from the streets goes into gutters, to drainage, and is this water then treated?
Stormwater?
Yes.
No, ma'am. The?
By my, uh, Counselor McGrew, uh, to an extent, there are some clean water requirements associated with, uh, stormwater, with detention facilities and things of that nature that have to be, uh, addressed part of the development process. Our city engineer can provide information to the council, uh, in regards to some of the clean water, uh, uh, standards associated with, uh, stormwater collection system, uh, detention ponds, uh, prior to a council making a final decision.
My hesitation is with chemicals, um, petroleum residue running into, uh, the stormwater drainage without being treated, um, if there's no curb and gutter. So, I saw in the slide that there was a statement of construction vehicle cleaning area, and it mentioned, uh, concrete wash-off. So, normally, when there are construction vehicles cleaned off, they're taken back to where they originate, to the plant, and there's a capture of this contaminated water, and it's treated before it's released. Will that happen here? Because I, I know that there will be some residue of lubricant, fuel, and concrete. Is that just going to go back into the earth?
Generally, uh, part of the Soil Erosion Sedimentation Pollution Control Plan will address where the vehicle wash-off areas are, how that, uh, water is, uh, captured in a, a, a certain area and that sort of thing. Uh, then, uh, you know, concrete wash-out areas are designated, uh, once they, uh, do start pouring concrete. That is usually lined such that, uh, over time, uh- such that, uh, over time, uh, the liner and, uh, the concrete can remove, be removed by trucks and, uh, another liner put in. That's part of, uh, the approval process with Soil Erosion Sedimentation Pollution Control Plan, part of the construction plans.
Does this give Mr. Hatabian any pause?
Staff is gonna provide information, uh, to council prior to the decision, uh, in, in regards, uh, to, uh, some of these issues. Staff has raised some issues. They are contained within, uh, the staff report. Uh, we have not prepared a formal, uh, recommendation from staff yet. Uh, we wanted, uh, uh, receive all of the comments at the public hearing before finalizing the staff report with comments, and that will be forthcoming prior to any decision by the council.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Carlin?
And I'll be quick, and before we, uh, would it be possible, and I'll, it may either be as a part of your report, or as a, just, uh, a one sheet or two sheet for us before the retreats, so we have something to talk about. Uh, is there, uh, can staff put together a list of all the places for this current design and where it is in conflict with our current codes? Explain, this is what, this is what's being asked for, this is where it's not in line. Can we put something together like that?
Yes, sir.
Very good. That might help us get our head around it a little bit better. Thank you very much.
Schmidt?
Has staff been able to find any examples of another residential development built with this kind of plan?
Uh, no, ma'am, not at this time, but we can certainly look and see what we can find out there.
Thank you.
I th- I think, uh, that'd be great information. I mean, sustainability is, is one of our tenants, so if we had other developments with similar practices that, to see how they perform, would be great information to add.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much. We'll move to our next, uh, public hearing. It's public hearing and discussion of rezoning requests from Rob Beecham for point seven, seven acres along West Marietta Connector, West Marietta, East Marietta, and Railroad Streets for the construction of ten single-family detached homes. Mr. Green?
Again, Mr. Mayor, members of council, you have put everything there in a nutshell. It's the same developer, Mr. Beecham. He's looking to rezone the property from General Commercial to CBD, which is Central Business District. Uh, as you stated, it is point seven, seven acres. His original submittal was a little smaller. He was able to acquire, uh, additional property to get to the seven, seven acres, and his plan is for ten single-family detached homes. In the Central Business District, there are not set, um, setbacks for front, side, or rear. The way our code reads, that's pretty much left up to staff to make sure that, or when we look at them, that it is comparable to other setbacks in the adjacent and nearby area. And what he has submitted, we feel is comparable to what Mr. Shrewsbury built, um, probably two thousand six, two thousand seven, just after Mr. Patton and I started with the city.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. We will be following the same process with ten minutes to speak for those in favor and ten minutes, uh, for those opposed. We'll op- open our public hearing and begin with Mr. Beecham, obviously, so.
Hello again. I'll push through. Uh, um, of course, the, the, the second thing we're talking about is our two-pronged effort in, um, in, in Canton, and so we're looking at the top circle, the, you know, the area that I've came up with. I called the hill, 'cause it's on a hill, so that was really creative. But, um, we've been able to assemble, uh, two, uh, parcels of land, and we plan on starting construction, you know, pretty quick. The, the gray road in the middle, that's Academy, um, Academy Street coming down, and you can see at the very bottom right, those are the ten, um, the ten lots that we're speaking about this evening. We've closed on four of the ten, and the other six are, uh, part of the same contract to buy the thirty-three acres, so they're contingent on, um, the rezoning process. Uh, we've also already closed on six, uh, parcels going up Academy Street, which we're in the process of pulling permits, um, now and hope to start as quickly as possible. Um, our, um, vision for this piece of property, and I'm not sure this wasn't the way it was at some time, but actually having a, a shared alley behind, between the units, and so they're all rear-load, um, garages, so you don't see any garage doors, so all the houses, all the homes would be facing either, uh, Marietta Street or, um, Railroad. You can see that the property immediately adjacent and surrounding this particular parcel, uh, are part of CBD. I, I've not been here as long, 'cause maybe some of you have, but I believe there used to be ha- homes on this at some point. I mean, it looks like there were remains of some homes and streets, but I'm not sure, but it's certainly, um, in the same, uh, genre of the other properties around it. And again, these are some of the, um, you know, high detail, uh, high attention to, uh, architecture. Um, we endeavor to never repeat, even though, I mean, right now, we're looking at a hundred and forty units that we're proposing in the city of Canton of actually never repeating the elevation twice. So sometimes elevations will be subtle because I, I don't have enough time to draw, draw that many, but, um, we, we pay particular attention to that, to making sure that all the homes, um, will have a high, high level of detail. Um, and this is our office. I just wanted to throw that on there. Um, we are in the process of renovating, uh, the building and look forward to making our corporate head cur- headquarters home here in Canton. Um, I wanted to take two seconds out of my ti- lot of time left just to a- address the, uh, low-impact development ideas that we're using are actually pretty common in the, um, with the use of, uh, previous or porous asphalt. Time up?
If it, if it applies to this development, that's fine. Does it apply to this development? Same ideas?
No, sorry.
Record for the other case.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No problem.
If there was ever an issue, we'd have a recording.
Yes, yes.
And so we wouldn't have it in the other case.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Speak on that topic, so.
But we're, we're, we're particularly thrilled to be here, and, uh, we look forward to being a part of the future. Uh, my family, we're all moving up here, not just our businesses, but, uh, we've got our homes for sale, and we're coming this way, so we look forward to being part of the fabric of Canton, and we're not just coming here to build and leave, we're coming to build and stay, so thank you very much.
Beecham?
We had, um, again, Mr. Dyer, point of order, we had, assistance that signed up, all signed up to speak for the first case. We didn't have anyone sign up to speak for the second case.
Yes. Mr. Owen, it indicated he would, wanted to. He thought he could do them both in that one, so we told him he had to come back to this one.
Right, so that would be allowed.
So I think that would be okay.
Okay. So let me ask some, Mr., anyone else, um, so in opposition, anyone who had signed up for the first one, want to speak in opposition to the second one? Okay, Mr. Owen, we'll start with you, since you had your request in advance.
Thank you. Still day and Owen, long view, significant long view. Uh, Railroad Street is so nice now, and I appreciate all of the work on it. I'm afraid I get distracted by the artwork trying to figure out what period is what sometimes and lose track of the traffic, but, but there's a problem with traffic on both ends, and I, I understand that, that traffic and roadwork is really separate from the, the zoning process here in a way, but it, it all kind of ties together. When, uh, this is an opportunity to work on the intersections down there. You're gonna have more traffic coming down from the new parking deck and from the, uh, History Center and everything coming down, and we've got that four-way stop, and then we've got the, immediately another turn on the railroad. Uh, before we get a house built on there, it's an opportunity to make those curves a little bit more easier to negotiate. Okay, and that's what I'm proposing, is just try to do a little study and see what might be done with the traffic situation at those two intersections before you get tied down, uh, with this. I don't know, a year or two back, y'all had some sort of, uh, a meeting I came to over here where it was discussion about, uh, different improvement projects and all, and I, I suggested the same thing then, and they said, "Oh, we can't do that, 'cause the city doesn't own the property." I think, "The city doesn't own the property." A lot of things that you do, you, you work it out and you buy the property or whatever. But, uh, I'm just, uh, I'm, I'm not against the, uh, the development. Uh, if it's anything like the homes that's been put up off the street nearby already, it'd be great, but, uh, I do think you need to look at the traffic situation of those intersections before you go forward with it.
Thank you, Mr. Owen. And, Mr. Weaver, did you wa- raise your hand? Where, did you sign up? Did you expect to speak on this one, on this as well?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize for my cold call, if I didn't sign up.
Okay, okay. So we will close the public hearing at this time and open up to council for discussion.
Ms. McGrew?
Do I understand correctly that these will be single-family homes? Detached?
Yes, ma'am. They are proposed to be single-family detached homes.
And how much space will be between the houses?
I believe his setback requirements request, oh, it's five feet from the side property line, so it'd be a ten-foot separation.
Thank you.
Ms. Wilson?
The street that Mr. Owen was speaking of, is, is that a city street?
I believe he's talking about...
Marieta?
Uh, Marietta Connector. Uh, all the streets that, uh, front the property are city streets.
But the street that I think he's talking about is part of Marietta Highway, isn't it?
The, the, the curve from Marietta and Railroad, as you're heading back towards the mill.
Is a city street?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Green. So we'll move into our business agenda, uh, with the consideration to approve amendments. You have in your packet, the council meeting draft minutes from January twentieth, uh, meeting then. Do we have any corrections, comments, uh, or motions?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. All members voted for the motion. We have, uh, some informational items this evening, uh, beginning with item A, a presentation on accessory dwelling units. Uh, Ms. Anderson? Good to see you again today.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I stand before you tonight to give you a presentation on accessory dwelling units, their use, and the city's regulations surrounding them. To briefly describe what an accessory dwelling is, I look to AARP for examples. According to AARP, an accessory dwelling unit is a small residence that shares a single-family lot with larger primary dwellings. It is also identified as an independent living space, and ADU is self-contained with its own kitchen or kitchenette, bathroom, and sleeping area. An accessory dwelling unit can be located within, attached to, or detached from the main residence. An ADU also can be converted from an existing structure, such as the garage that you see pictured here on the screen, or built anew. Accessory dwelling units come in various shapes and styles. Using the example before you, there are ADUs that are detached, attached, interior upper level or lower level, above garage, and garage conversion. You can see those highlighted in red. AARP argues that accessory dwelling units are a great use to assist with aging in place. AARP states that as small houses or apartments that exist on the same property lot as a single-family dwelling residence, accessory dwelling units play a major role in serving a national housing need. Additionally, they further state that accessory dwelling units are considered a traditional home type reemerging as an affordable and flexible housing option that meets the needs of older adults and young families alike. AARP conducted a home and community preference survey in 2018. As a part of this survey, it was determined that people fifty years old and older would actually consider creating an accessory dwelling unit to provide a home for a loved one in need of care, to provide housing for relatives or friends, to feel safer by having someone living nearby, to have space for their guests, to increase the value of their home, to create a place for a caregiver to stay, and to earn extra income from renting to a ten- to a tenant. Now moving on to the use of accessory dwelling units in Canton. Per section one oh four, point oh two, point oh two A of Canton's Unified Development Codes, accessory dwelling units include, but are not limited to, basement apartments, garage apartments, caretakers' quarters, guest house, and other accessory dwellings. Accessory dwellings shall not include tents, boats, manufactured storage, buildings, and mobile structures, which includes RVs and travel trailers, with the exception that RVs and travel trailers may be allowed for occupancy in a campground or travel trailer park as permitted in this Unified Development Code. Accessory dwellings are permissible within the principal dwellings or as a freestanding dwelling in residential zoning districts. Accessory dwelling units within the principal dwellings, per chapter one oh four, point oh two, point oh two, point B of Canton Unified Development Codes, accessory dwelling contained within principal dwellings shall comply with the following standards. There shall be no more than one accessory dwelling in a principal dwelling unit. The accessory dwelling shall be accessible from the interior of the principal dwelling. The accessory dwellings shall have no more than one bedroom. The accessory dwellings shall not exceed fifty percent of the hattable, habitable floor area of the principal dwelling, over twelve-hundred square feet, whichever is less. One additional off-street parking space shall be provided to serve the accessory dwelling, and the accessory dwelling shall comply with all building and health code standards. Accessory dwelling units as freestanding dwellings, per chapter one oh four, point oh two, point oh two C of Canton Unified Development Code, freestanding accessory dwellings shall comply with the following standards. There shall be no more than one accessory dwelling unit per lot. The accessory dwelling unit may be located in a second floor over a detached garage or maybe a separate structure. The accessory dwelling unit shall have no more than two bedrooms. The accessory dwellings shall be located only within the rear yard. The lot shall comply with the minimum lot area standard set forth in chapter one oh two of this Unified Development Code. The accessory dwellings shall meet the minimum setback requirement for the principal dwellings as required by the underlying zoning district, and one additional off-street parking space shall be provided to serve the accessory dwelling unit. Please note that item three and four on this list does not specify a minimum or maximum allotted size for the accessory dwelling units. Also, staff believe that an item six on this list should be amended to meet the accessory uses setback of ten feet, as indicated in chapter one oh four, point oh two, point oh one, A two of this Unified Development Code. Canton zoning district that allows accessory dwelling units are permissible are R forty, R twenty, R fifteen, R ten, R four, planned development upon master approval, master plan approval, and O R T. There is an approval process for accessory dwelling units. A building permit is required whether the proposed accessory dwelling unit is a con- A building permit is required whether the proposed accessory dwelling unit is a conversion of an existing space, a detached structure, or a new construction. Applicants are asked to submit their application and all supporting documentation via the city's Lama portal at www.canton.onlama.com. Once the permit has been issued, construction can then begin, and the applicant must pass all inspections to receive a certificate of occupancy or a certificate of completion, whichever is appropriate. In Councilman Tolan's absence, I would like to mention that he has conducted some of his own research and asked Sanovis and Wil Fargo's banks two questions. The first question was, what mechanism do you have for a homeowner that wishes to put an accessory dwelling unit on their property? Both banks answered with home equity line of credit loans or HELOC loans. If the homeowner has enough equity, they could then take out a HELOC loan for the accessory dwelling unit. The second question was, can you issue a mortgage on an accessory dwelling unit on other properties? Mr. Tolan shared this response. The only challenging requirement is that there are likely no comparables in the area. They must have comps on the subject property, or the banks would not allow, would not be able to issue a mortgage. This likely, this will likely take time as accessory dwelling units begin to surface in the city. The other requirement is that the structure must be affixed to a permanent foundation. These are the references used in this research. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. She fits her report. So next, an information item, we have review of the December financials. Finance Director, Ms. Forster.
Good evening. I know we have a long meeting ahead of us still yet, so I wanted to briefly touch on a few items with the December financials. Some highlights, first of all, you'll notice a large increase in cash in the general fund due to the real estate tax collections exceeding five million dollars and planning development and land disturbance fees. All of these revenues have already exceeded the budgeted estimates for the year. The city paid out sixty-four thousand dollars to the county for collecting real estate taxes on our behalf over the last three years. If you recall, we started in 2017 with allowing the county to bill and collect all the city taxes. Excavation began on the City of Canton parking deck. And we spent a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars out of the SPOST fund for this project. The Hotel Motel Tax Fund sponsored the historic Canton magazine in December in collaboration with Enjoy Cherokee. And the acquisition of additional land at the Bluffs. The city has increased its share of common area assessment fees with the Property Owners Association totaling seventy-two thousand four hundred dollars for the calendar year 2022. Those are just a few of the expenditure items. One thing that I'm excited to share with you is with your recent adoption of the five percent retirement contribution match. We've seen, uh, very good returns on that so far. Just since the beginning of the year, January, ten employees who were previously investing in the retirement but were not eligible for a match are now receiving a match. I'm one of those in that group, so I appreciate that. Sixteen tenured employees who had not been participating in the program are now participating. And all, this is going to benefit all future employees. So now, as we stand just after one month, the city's matching contributions to employer retirement funds have risen from an annual rate of about thirty-nine thousand dollars to over a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. So for all City of Canton employees, we thank you.
Awesome, great news.
If you have any questions on the financials, I'm here to take notes or answer anything.
Questions on financials? You love good news on financials, so. Thank you, Ms. Forster. Item C is, again, for information, uh, only, uh, regarding annexation and resiling request for 1.16 acres located at 210 Butterworth Road for a proposed office space. Mr. Green.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you stated, we have received an annexation and resiling request for 210 Butterworth Road. The same developer that is currently developing some retail space at, at Butterworth and Marietta Highway is the applicant for this. This will be, and is used as an office area. The county has been notified as required, and they will be coming before, uh, this group, the first Thursday in May, or March for the public hearing. And then, of course, the third Thursday for action. I'll also note that they have filed a variance request to reduce the fifty-foot buffer that is required when property within the city limits of Canton abuts unincorporated by Cherokee County. They want to reduce that from a fifty-foot buffer down to forty feet, and their reason is to have a better driveway design. Part of the property is in kind of a curve there, and my, uh, expectation is they're looking to do this to create a better line of sight. And that will be going before our Board of Appeals in, in March as well.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Do you have any announcements? We've had, um, a request from, for council due to the, uh, length of tonight's meeting for a very quick recess. Can we do a five-minute recess? Would that work? Okay, five-minute recess, and we'll be right back, so. Thank you for your patience.
So, Mayor mentioned the golf course, golf carts, and everything, like people driving.
I mean, it's kind of like died down. I think as well, the weather probably has a lot to do with it, but, but definitely not as many people who should have registered their golf cart, don't register their golf carts.
This spot, it's making it much hotter up here than it was down there. Don't you think it's warmer up here than it was?
Yeah, I mean.
Well, we're all close together again, too.
Especially generated a little body heat. Take medication, I'm trying to participate in purchases.
I haven't heard from them in a while. He texted that we looked good up here, and that's the last I've heard from him.
Which is, which is a delay, because there's like a thirty-second delay.
We're like this. I know, um, thanks. He's probably listening to us right now. Hey, Shawnee. Please, no, that's me.
I did, I did.
Uh, please note the councilors from Ward Three are...
Ward Three's dedicated.
They're partying.
We chose to do.
So thank you for your patience. We will reconvene at this time. Do we have any announcements this evening? Now we'll move into our ten-minute public input. We have one, um, gentleman signed up, Mr. Stephen Jaffe. If I misspelled that's your name, I apologize, and you can correct me when you get up. Thank you, welcome.
If you'll just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Stephen Jaffe, 510 Deerfield Trail, Canton, Georgia. I'd first like to say thank you for the opportunity to come before the city commission. I appreciate the time, and I'll make this short and sweet. I've spoken with Joellen, uh, emailed, actually Joellen, and I think we spoke on the phone briefly, and, and Mr. Mayor Billy Grant about my concern. And my concern, uh, is probably not so much that something's terribly wrong in the, in the layout, but the process seems flawed, probably in the handoff from one group to the other. And I'm talking in reference to the automated photo ticketing system. I was recently ticketed, and that's not why I'm here. I paid the seventy-five dollars. It's not going to break the bank. The problem is that the process is broken. And, and your eighth charter was leadership, right? And so I'm asking, I'm, I'm bringing my concern forward to the leadership. I sent a three-page letter to, to Billy, and he told me that you were going next weekend to an outing. And so he'll share that, hopefully, that information with you. And I'll be happy to answer any questions about it. But fundamentally, the process is that you get a ticket like this in the mail about two weeks after you're in that area. It doesn't really matter which area it was, it just happens, right? You get a ticket, fine. And on the back, it says, one of the, one of the options, well, first, of course, you could pay the citation. The second is to contest the violation. And, and by requesting a court hearing, you will be scheduled to appear in person to present your va, violation and supporting documentation to the court. Now I've taken high school, I've, you know, got a, a degree, computer science, worked for IBM for thirty years. Twelve years have been taught in history, due process, you have your day in court. So what do I do? I say I want to have the court case. I bring all my supported documentation, video, pictures of the signs, et cetera, to the courthouse. And, and can you imagine my, uh, I don't even know the right word is to say that, when I got there, they said, well, your choices are, you can pay the fine, or we'll put a lien against your license plate, or driver's license, or registration, and when you go to renew it, you won't be able to until you pay the seventy-five dollars. That's all we can do. And I, and I said to the judge, I said, I need, I need to present my evidence to a judge. Somebody needs to hear my evidence, but we don't do that here. Okay, so, so clearly, that process is wrong. And when the judge, Judge Roach, who was very nice, said to me, the first thing he said to me was, Steve, Mr. Jaffe, I'm in a position that I don't like. I'm in a position where I can't make a judgment on this case. I can't look at your driving history, I can't look at the documentation you brought with you. You can pay it, or you can put a lien against your license. And that's wrong. The, the fact that you've allowed a photo system to be installed is okay. It is not okay to trounce on people's constitutional and civil liberties rights and to prove them guilty or guilty when they go to the, when they even attempt to go to the court system. That's all, the rest of the materials here, you, you'll, you'll share that with your coworkers. I thank you for the time. The fact that I stayed to this point should be enough, right? Valid that, look, let's face it, we all had grandparents, great-grandparents. My grandfather was a dentist in World War II, who some sacrificed their lives for us to have these civil liberties and constitutional rights that, at, at this point in the history of the country, should not be trampled on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jaffe. I have shared your letter and appreciate your patience this evening. We will now move into our consent agenda. We have three items. As normal protocol, I will read these three items. If anyone would like any of them removed for further discussion, we will do so. Item A, approval of the adoption of the annual update to the capital improvements element, CIE, five-year short-term work plan for impact fees. Item B, approval to award a task order to Atkins for engineering services to add to an odor control system to the Harmon Field Lit station. And item C, approval to renew the task order agreement contract with Black and Beach. Anyone like any item removed for further discussion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion approved and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Moving into old business, item A, discussion of proposed contract with Delta Municipal for professional services for advanced material infrastructure AMI system. Mr. Ingram.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If you'll recall, back in December, we issued, I'm sorry, back last year, we issued an RFP, and in December, we chose Delta Municipal Supply Company, which is our current vendor, and they were by far the lowest proposer for our AMI system. I mentioned to you that I would come back to you in January or February with a contract. That's what you have in front of you. It has been re- reviewed by the city attorney, and, uh, I will not be asking for action tonight, but you will see that on the seventeenth for action if you so choose. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those, or get those answers back to you as soon as possible.
Mr. Ingram, would you just read right for a second, because I love hearing how much was budgeted for this system and, and what the?
Yes, it, and, and good point, it was, uh, budgeted four million dollars. It came back at one point two seven, approximately one and two, one million two hundred seventy-five thousand. My apologies, I don't have my computer in front of me.
Close enough.
But, uh, uh, we were very pleased with that, with that proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Item B, discussion and possible action on case Z two one zero nine dash zero zero four for Johnson Cloud Inc., requesting to rezone property from RA six residential tax six acres per acre to G C Commercial for an expansion of Cloud Supply Company. Mr. Green.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, this is a rezoning request, as you stated, to go from RA six to G C, which is General Commercial, and as you stated, for an expansion of the Cloud Supply Company, um, business. This matter's been before you. Uh, it has been tabled at your request for the applicant to present a more detailed site plan as to how the property will be developed. Uh, Mr. Benson has provided that plan. I believe Mr. Cloud himself was the architect of the plan. And that has been presented to you tonight, and this matter is up for a possible vote. I will mention, on part of the plan, it is showing a gravel, a drive area. That will require a variance, as our codes require surfaces like that to be a hardened surface, either asphaltic or concrete of some sort, and I have mentioned that to Mr. Cloud.
Thank you, Mr. Green. So, we have discussed this case before. We did get the, the drawing and site plan. Any questions, comments?
And I will note that he was looking at the property at six ninety-five Hickory Flat Highway to further expand his business, but it's my understanding from Mr. Chambers that he is no longer in negotiations to lease that property. That's a property just on the east side of five seventy-five that has been, uh, a car lot a couple of times over the years, and originally was a convenience store.
Mr. Green, do you know if he, uh, Mr. Cloud will be looking at additional property for, for their expansion?
For the property that's under the rezoning.
Any additional property?
I have not heard any mention that, that he is looking to acquire any additional property.
Ms. Schmidt.
Um, I just wanted to comment that this is part of our placemaking initiative and our sunny side initiative. And, um, I know that the clouds are aware of that, but I just wanted to put it out there that there's sort of standard we're going for in this area. And I would like to move to approve this application with the following conditions. Number one, no landscape material shall be visible from Hickory Flat Highway. Number two, as part of any land disturbance permit, a registered landscape architect shall prepare a landscape plan for the property entrance. Said plan shall be designed so as to screen all activity within the interior of the property from view from Hickory Flat Highway. And that number three, the area along Hickory Flat Highway that is not part of the subject property, the G dot right-of-way shall remain undisturbed.
Okay. We have a motion with, uh, conditions? Is there a second for that motion?
Would you repeat the motion?
Quickly, can we hit those conditions one more time?
Certainly, Mr. Carlin. Number one, no landscape material shall be visible from Hickory Flat Highway. Number two, as part of any land disturbance permit, a registered landscape architect shall prepare a landscape plan for the property entrance. This plan should be designed so as to screen all activity within the interior of the property from view from Hickory Flat Highway. And number three, the area along Hickory Flat Highway that is not part of the subject property, which is the G dot right-of-way, shall remain undisturbed.
Ms. Wilson?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion, question, comments?
As the applicant, like, as the applicant, is the applicant aware of the conditions that we're talking about today, and are they in agreement with them?
I believe so.
Yes, alright, thank you.
Uh, well, the, the, the entrance, just, uh, for, for my confirmation, Mr. Green, um, require a curb cut off of one forty.
Yes, sir.
That G dot, uh, dictates where that goes, is that correct?
Well, Bethany left, I was gonna ask.
Okay.
Mr. Patton, you don't, is that G dot right-of-way there?
The, uh, subject property, with this property, I'm not sure if that is classified as a G dot or not. We will find that out. Uh, i- if it is, I will have to get the permit approval from G dot.
Okay.
I'm not a hundred percent sure, uh, it's kind of crazy with G dot, but generally, anything within six hundred and sixty feet of, uh, interchange usually is a G dot right-of-way.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, um, can we just repeat that for our city clerk at home?
Yes. The question, or?
Uh, the question and the answer, I guess, that we're not, I guess we can just say we're not sure that it's G dot, but if it is.
Right. And the reason I ask is that the, the entrance, proposed entrance on the, the drawing, um, just the proximity to the exit ramp from five seventy-five south is, uh, questionable. And it was just a, uh, uh, I was just curious about that. But obviously, if it did require G dot approval, they would need to get G dot approval, so.
And if they don't, the city staff will have to sign off on the plan.
Correct.
Anyway.
Yes, that would be part of the land disturbance permit.
Okay. Any further comments, questions? We have a, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. We will move into new business, discussion of Heritage Park Playground, uh, contract. Mr. Dodson.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Excuse me, I'm fighting, uh, losing my voice, so, uh, apparently I talk too much. Before I ask for a direction on the, the playground for Heritage Park, um, kind of wanted to give you just a little bit of a background as to how we got to where we are today with the two proposals that you have. Excuse me. We, uh, when we started talking about our location, you know, idea for the playground at Heritage Park, the first thing we kept telling ourselves was, we wanted something unique and different, unlike we, we have already, and unlike what anyone around us has. So, the first thing that we thought of was incorporating the mounds of Heritage Park into the playground itself. Um, whether it be surrounding it, implementing it into the mounds somehow, and, um, so with our pre-bid meeting, we really stressed, we wanted unique, we wanted to incorporate the mounds as much as possible. We wanted features that we currently have throughout the city. And, and that's kind of what led us to where we are today with our two options. But you have already, um, option one, some of the things that we, we were drawn to was the incorporation of the mounds with a slide, with some benches, shade areas on the actual mounds themselves. This would provide an area for parents to overlook the play area and keep an eye on their kids a little bit better than ground level. You know, it's almost like we've corralled them in a little bit of an arena in the middle of the mounds, if you will. We also liked the idea of the dog park aspect or addition to the, um, the playground, um, option. This wasn't staff's idea of a permanent or new paw park, if you will. You know, we knew it's something that we've talked about the last year or so. Um, but it was a unique aspect, was something that you could quickly grab your kids, and if you wanted to grab your dog, you can keep an eye on both at the same time. Something, again, unique and different than any other proposal. Additionally, with this bid, um, or this proposal, I would be doing away with the outdoor gym equipment. Obviously, we just added a new gym to Heritage Park, and by taking away the two features in their option, um, it would save us eighteen thousand dollars. We could either apply this to additional play equipment, additional size or features to the dog. If, for some reason, the dog park is not the route that we want to go in that particular layout, staff recommends option two, and I think we provided a package, option two, which is Playworks. Their proposal is the largest overall footprint for the area that we're trying to, um, utilize here. It covers the most age range, ages five and up. The overall design and colors match everything from the outdoor gym to the city's logo. And some other themes such as the logs and, um, the trees, and, and things incorporated into the actual playground. Not only that, but we do have two other playgrounds currently, um, throughout the city, or in the city, that are done by Playworks. I work with them on a yearly basis, doing warranty work, repairs. They are very good to work with. So, another playground by them wouldn't hurt at all. I would remove, remove a few items from this one, um, this particular budget. Um, there's a merry-go-round thing that leads to a lot of damage. Um, we have particularly hard time with the one we have at Etowah River Park coming off track. Basically making a bull arena around it all the way down to dirt. Save us a few thousand dollars in there and a few other items, and we hope to incorporate the mounds more, the slides, benches, shade areas. Just something that's not currently in this package. Additionally, the last thing with this one, it currently comes in about fifteen, fifteen thousand under budget, which allows us to do additional concrete work. Our thought is, instead of a, your normal border around a playground that holds in the mulch, we would like to do a full sidewalk around the entire thing, then sidewalks to the parking area, that will, that will be your curb, if you will. The mulch will be contained in there, and you'll have full access all around the entire playground with that particular option. So, that's all I have for the two options. If you have any questions, I'd answer anything you got, concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Dodson. Appreciate your thorough presentation. Questions? Mr. Carlin?
I've got a couple, just real quick. The, uh, we got two options here. One of them, if I understand them right, because I don't want to get them confused.
Yes.
We have one option incorporates the slides into the mounds, and then that also has the dog pad park area.
Correct.
And then we have this other Playworks group that does not necessarily incorporate the mounds, uh, but just has the play areas, and is without the dog area.
Yes.
And I'll say, I think that, you know, this council has always said, we're excited about a dog park and making sure that happens, and it's top of the line. You know, this, I appreciate the innovation, but I think it, it seems a little out of place, but I do like the idea of the mounds and the slides, so.
Yes.
Whatever, whatever that feedback is worth, I want a picture to give it.
And with the second option budget and some items that we're going to take off, because we already have those particular play, uh, sets at other parks, it will allow us to add a slide off the mound, or a couple of slides off the mound. So, we have some wiggle room there to do some other things.
Makes sense, thank you.
Appreciate that.
I, I will mention, too, if there are any citizens still watching on the live stream, um, Dog Park is a priority for us. We know it was our citizens' priority. It's on our radar. It will be a topic of our retreat, um, and so, just wanted to say that for the record. Anyone else? Ms. McGee? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Waterman. Thank you for your, uh, proposals. I love the equipment. Is any of it ADA or all ability?
So, currently, um, these particular proposals, they are not. In order to do the ADA part of the playground, requires the rubber matting, um, which, budget-wise, it would have taken up nearly all if not. But we do have, with both of these designs, the ability to expand on and add other things, um, which is something that can be done in the future. With the sidewalks that we are discussing, it does make it ADA getting to it. But as far as, you know, uh, actual playground itself, neither one of these do have.
Okay. And, uh, would there be any of, uh, the swings, and I don't know the proper term for them, but it's where, uh, a baby or toddler sits in front of, uh, an older person, an parent or something, and they swing together as opposed to swinging your child out, and then you have no control? I'm sure you know what I'm talking about.
Mommy and, mommy and me.
Mommy and me swings.
Mommy and me.
Um, as far as, um, the swings go, they are very interchangeable. Mostly, it's, the chains are all the same, the heights are adjustable, and it's just whether or not we want to do all toddler swings, all middle-aged kid swings. So, that's something we can, you know, we can add and play with as we, um, get closer to an actual design.
Thank you.
I'd like to consider a daddy and me swing, please.
I will make one comment about the, about the matting that, that was a concern for staff, is the fact that Heritage Park compared to all of our other parks does flood a good bit. And that makes that rubber matting a very difficult surface to keep clean and in good condition for ADA. But, as, as I think Adam was saying, because we're able to flex out some of the equipment that's in there, there may be opportunities for us to get some more inclusive equipment switched in with the product, if that's the particular vendor that we work with. Because this is the same vendor that did the ADA all-inclusive over at Etowah River Park. So, they have the equipment, we just have to figure out what pieces we can flex out with them.
I think we, I think we need to provide that type of equipment in all of our parks, and not just put it in one park, but have it everywhere. Thank you.
Are there questions? Oh, Mr. Waterman had a question.
With the, uh, Dog Park, uh, option, what are those dimensions specifically?
Sorry?
Looks to be about, at least lengthwise, a third. Um, I guess my question is, uh, it's probably not the size that I would think a Dog Park would be, but what's the capacity? How many, you know, people, or, I'm sorry, dogs, people, be in this, uh, space?
So, as far as the footprint of the actual Finston area is forty by fifty, it is not a large footprint by any means. But again, it's, it's not a, a replacement for a Dog Park. It's more of an amenity for people who, you know, want to take their two-legged kids and their four-legged kids at the same time, and you have it. And you have an ability to do that without having to go two different locations. So that was kind of the, the thought of the uniqueness from staff's side.
Schmidt?
Um, I really like the idea of taking advantage of the mounds. I've seen some pictures of what other cities have done with mounds, just like ours, and it's really incredible. So I would much rather see an agility course like we're talking about as part of our world-class final dog park and put those resources towards taking advantage of the mounds at Heritage.
And again, this is, this is something that we would like to build on in the future. And all the proposals were told this exact same thing, you know, I want to, you know, next year, I want to add tunnel through the mound. I want the ability to be able to do that, you know? And so all these are, we can expand as we go throughout the entire mound system or out into the field if that's something we want to do in the future.
And the proposal that didn't, that doesn't have the mounds in it, they are capable
Yes.
of using the mounds, though?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, appreciate your, your work, Adam, and, and this is appreciated, uh, going afar and above and beyond typical playground equipment, so.
Mayor?
It's exciting.
This is a long way from when I used to take my grandchildren over there and we slid down the mounds on a cardboard box.
That, that was, that was the thought behind it. We see it all the time while we're out cutting grass and, um, they're already utilized. Let's give them something to boost it a little bit, so.
Yeah. It's great.
So I would, I would like to clarify for staff because what we want to do is we want to take the conversation here and go back and frame up an actual, uh, package and contract. What I hear is remove the dog park section, go with the second proposal, um, and look at adding the mounds in as a more active part of the second proposal, using, um, ADA equipment when that's available and making sure we, um, get the sidewalk around as the curbing. Is that, is that what, what I've heard? That'll make it easier for Adam to sit back down with.
I'm okay with that, but I really, you know, and I want us to have a big, nice dog park someday, but I like the idea of taking your two-legged children and your four-legged and have a space enclosed just for the, for the dogs. But if they're, if, you know, if you don't.
I think the concern there, uh, and, and it came up in our check-in calls is that, you know, is the dog park came up at the very top of our list when we were going through the roadmap process. And we could imagine citizens saying, well, if you do that, then you're not gonna, that's gonna be it. You're not gonna do the dog park. Uh, I, I do like that, and, and I think once we do have the world-class dog parks or buying for it, and I think those are like satellite stations, that would be a great idea, but, uh.
I don't see this as a dog park.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, dog playground, so. But, great. Awesome, thank you.
Yes. Let me know when you're ready, start the dog park, get on it.
Rest your voice. Item B, discussion of proposed fiscal year end 2021 budget amendments. Ms. Forrester, welcome back.
So our auditors are wrapping up the fiscal year 2021 audit. And one item we need to take care of is a few budget amendments. And if you look in your notes, you'll see that we're asking for a fifty-seven thousand, six hundred seventy-five dollar amendment to the general fund and an eleven thousand dollar budget amendment to the rental car tax fund. I think that's pretty good considering our overall fiscal year 2021 budget was over sixty-seven million dollars. So I'm here to ask, answer any questions tonight or next meeting. And, um, we're not asking for any action tonight, but we will be asking for a motion to approve the fiscal year end 2021 budget amendments at the next meeting.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, discussion of H G O R proposal for the review and amendments to the city of Canton's plant pallet. Mr. Patton.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, you do have in your packet a proposal from H G O R uh, in regards to review and recommendations, uh, as it relates, uh, to the, uh, city Canton's plant pallet or the tree list contained within, uh, our, uh, tree, uh, protection, uh, regulations. They have a proposed this work be, uh, completed, uh, by the end of June. Uh, the price is three thousand five hundred dollars.
Great, any questions, comments? Great, thank you, Mr. Patton.
Thank you.
Now. Item D, discussion of.
Excellent job.
Discussion of possible agreement with H G R to study Etowah River corridor, Mr. Peppers.
Also by H G O R. This is a contract that basically is a, um, a replication of the work that they did around the Hickory Log Creek reservoir, where they would go in and they would do a study, basically a hundred-foot buffer of the river, looking at tree species, plant species, helping us identify opportunities for overlooks, looking at the area to see, um, what vegetation might be able to be cleared, hand-cleared along the banks, um, where we need to look at, uh, invasive species areas and things like that. And so the proposal, initially, we had a conversation in November, H G O R said they wouldn't start on it before the first of January. Ways, but then they came back and said that they would really like to work on it if we decide to move forward with them sometime with a visit included in the spring so that they can look at some of the flowering plants and not just the, the, um, winter season as well. And so the proposal that you have before you, it's a thirty-four thousand dollar, uh, project. And, um, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
What area of Etowah does that cover?
City limit to city limit.
Okay, great. Seemed like a great price.
The, the final result will be very similar to the initial study. Remember, they did two studies on Hickory Log Creek, one was the buffer analysis, then then one was the plan. This will just be the, the buffer analysis piece. So it'll be a very similar product to that.
Any other questions? Ms. Carter?
I feel like I understood it a lot better when it was around the reservoir.
Sure.
When we're talking about here, what were we going, is the goal to then also have them do a trail plan down the road? Or what is going to be the value for them to do this study?
Well, so as part of the study, there'll be some review of topography and things like that. Um, you know, we, we already will have trail on one section. But one of the things that will occur as part of this study is they will also be looking at some of the areas that own, um, like the land that we bought at the bend of Marietta Highway, for instance, uh, the, the land that we own off of Keith Drive. So they'll be able to look at some of those areas as well, and they can make some recommendations as to where there might be good places for trails and other amenities. They're just not going to actually do the concept of those at that point. There are some lands that fall in that that we don't control, uh, as well. So if, if, if after they've done the initial section, if we want to come back and, and add on some, some of that, that'll be fine. They would do it in two different sections anyways, so to speak.
I guess the, what is, what would staff use it for? How would it be used with staff and planning and the, 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 I mean, we didn't, we know we don't want to just go on a shelf and live, so.
Sure.
What are you guys going to use it for?
Well, so some of it will allow us to think about what we already maintain in areas where we do have trails, um, looking at trees that might need to be taken out because they're aged out or they're damaged. Um, looking at areas where we may want to add some landscape along the trails and what plants would do well there. Also identifying all the plants in that area because that gives us an opportunity to do an educational component. And it will also give us some access to ideas about where we could add some potential overlooks or things in the future based on the way the banks are set up.
That makes sense, thank you very much.
Any further questions? Ms. McGee?
Um, I'd like to go back to Mr. Patton, if I may, about the, um, trees with H G O R. What?
I was wondering why you didn't ask any questions. You were asleep.
There's no going back.
What happened to our thirty-minute meetings?
Where's Sandy? We're talking about pallets.
No going back.
Well, now that you bring that up, I, I do have a problem with the dog park. If we're going to have a dog park, I think we need to give equal time to the cats.
That's not Mr. Patton's topic, so.
Have a scratch patch, but that's neither here nor there, is it, Mr. Patton?
Please proceed, Ms. McGee.
I see that this is just for trees, right? For the pallets? I'm sorry?
I believe that's, uh, correct, uh, that, uh, they're going to be looking at, uh, trees. I believe our current, uh, tree list does include, uh, overstory, understory, as well as some shrubs.
If it's possible, I'd love to see included in this would be shrubberies, ground covers, and ornamentals. The, um, shrubbery that Mr. Peppers commented on the other day was, um, around Walgreens. And he says it's the first time he's seen the sign of Walgreens in months, maybe? Well, those are nandinas, and so now all that we're seeing are the red berries on those nandinas that are toxic to wildlife. So I, I think that we could use some professional help with, um, a shrubbery, ground cover, and ornamental pallet also.
We'll follow up with H G O R in regards to that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Peppers?
Couple of items that I do have before you tonight. First and foremost, I want to talk about the city's health insurance. Our plan year starts on April first, and so historically during the month of January, we work with our, uh, insurance broker to get quotes, uh, from major, um, carriers within the area. The city has been with Blue Cross Blue Shield Anthem for a number of years, several, a couple decades at least. And as you are well aware, they are currently, uh, in some contractual issues with Northside Hospital, which is one of our major providers. One of our other, um, carriers that we look at is United. United is currently out of contract with Wellstar, which is another one of our providers. We did receive quotes back from, um, Blue Cross Blue Shield as our existing carrier. The initial quote back was a twenty-four percent increase. They eventually came back with about a fifteen percent increase. And as we sat down with the broker, we opted to look at a different carrier. We opted to look at Aetna. Aetna currently has contracts with all, uh, four of the major existing providers in the area. Star and Northside, uh, which basically hits all the areas that our employees would be using from a hospital coverage standpoint. Um, Aetna's proposal came back to us at a six percent reduction. Part of that is based off of us using, uh, a high deductible plan, uh, which, uh, creates a higher deductible for the employee or the, or the covered family. But the offset to that is that it helps bring down the cost of the plan overall. And so in looking at that reduction, the city is proposing to move forward with Aetna at that rate, but also to use some of the savings to create a health reimbursement account for our employees and those covered. We would create, uh, uh, four tiers of reinvestment in that health reimbursement account. The first would be five hundred dollars for employees, seven fifty for employee and spouse, seven fifty for employee and children, and a thousand for families. Overall, what this does by moving to that plan is it will reduce the overall cost and premiums to our employees. So an employee-only plan will save a, a little less than two hundred dollars a year. Employee spouse plan will be about thirty-seven hundred dollars less a year. The employee plus children plan will be about twenty-seven hundred dollars less a year. And the employee family plan will drop, uh, by almost six thousand dollars a year, uh, in premiums. So those will be dollars that we can put back into the hands of our employees. Couple of other benefits specific to the Aetna plan. Aetna has a contract with C V S, so our employees will be able to use their, uh, clinic clinic at no cost if they use that particular, uh, venue. Um, we would move our vision and dental also with Aetna, that's part of the package. Um, on our, uh, dental insurance, it actually goes up in maximum coverage, uh, uh, annual coverage. And it also provides for orthodontia for not only the children in the plan, but also for adults in the plan as well, the employee. They have very similar wellness benefits. There's, you know, they all do telehealth, uh, type plans as well. What we would be doing is bringing back a contract for council, uh, to consider to approve at the next meeting. We do have to move on health insurance in February because we have to take the month of March to get everybody enrolled in the new plan, get the new cards in so that come April first, our employees are able to start with their new, uh, carrier at that point. Um, I'm happy to try to answer any questions you have. Mr. Ingram's here. Ms. Waters is also here if you have any particular questions on that. As I said, we just met, um, uh, earlier this week with our broker, um, on tweaking the plans to be able to offer this this year. And so we'll have more documentation to you.
Any questions? Thank you, sounds great.
One other thing I wanted to mention to you, on the consent agenda tonight, you approved a task order agreement, um, with Black and Beach. I do have an initial task order for you, but it's one of our lower-cost task orders that we have, but basically requires coming to you. It's a timely piece. We have to do a water loss audit every year, uh, in the month of February. And with the work that we've been doing on some of our, um, other water and sewer projects, staff determined that it would be easier, uh, and more time-efficient to pay Black and Beach to actually do our water loss report for us. Some of the forms have changed this year, uh, and, and they have a lot of the data points that we already need. So I have a task order number four, which is for four thousand dollars for them to do our water loss audit. So there's a couple of options. Option number one is you could add it to the agenda for approval tonight. Option number two is you could give me the authority to sign it, it's within my budgeted amount. And if you wanted to ratify it as an agenda item at the next meeting to formally place it on the agenda. But staff does need some direction on this tonight so we can move forward. If we're not going to use Black and Beach, then we need to ramp up our staffing on that particular item.
Did you say the amount was four thousand dollars?
Four thousand dollars.
And we approved the task order, we approved them, so why, why you, why do you need our approval?
The task order agreement allows us to contract with them on quick projects without going out to bid. This is an actual agreement or a task order on a particular item, so agreements are supposed to come back to council.
That's, that catch, the city manager can spend the money, but people want written contracts, he can't sign a contract. I, I think we amended it that you can sign it if it's in your spending authority, though, right? Isn't that what it said?
I think I can sign it if council approves it.
Have to look back at what we did.
We changed the charter and we changed the ordinance since the last time I had to do a task order.
That's terrible.
Do we have a motion?
But I thought we, I thought we allowed him to sign if it was within his spending authority, but.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Anyway, if you're going to vote, you might as well approve the task order, amend the agenda and add it and, and vote on it, so.
Do we have a motion to amend the agenda? Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted in motion.
The motion would be to approve task order number four, twenty twenty-one water loss audit for a amount of four thousand dollars with Black and Beach.
Well, a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All members voted in motion.
And one other informational item for you, as part of our expansion of the wastewater, uh, treatment plant, water pollution control plant, um, we have some easements that we have to work out with Georgia Power as it relates to their land. There are actually five different parcels of our land that we'll have easements on. We'll be bringing those to your consideration at the next meeting. Uh, but we do need to act on those at the next meeting so we can move forward with their portion of our project. But since there's five of them, there's deeds and easements and all that that we've been working on. I just wanted to bring that to your attention so you'll know what's coming forward. We will be asking for action. We will be asking for action on that that night.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Any other questions for Mr. Peppers? Okay.
Thank you.
We had no council-introduced items at the beginning. I'm just checking. Okay. Very briefly, I, I think I still see two citizens, Mr. Latimer and Ms. Stanton, in the audience. I want to thank you for your endurance, for staying through the meeting. And please see Mr. Ingram and Ms. Peppers for a special departing gift, so. I want to thank Mr. Peppers and Ms. Johnson, Mr. Ingram and Mr. Quarter again for the help putting the state of the city together. And again, I blame the length of it on the council because as I told Ms. Schmidt either last night or this morning, I've kind of lost track of time. It's like if they weren't so damn productive, we wouldn't have so much to report on, so. Thank you, council, for your great work and your hard work. And I wanted to, I think Chief Merrifield may be lingering around there, but. Chief Merrifield. Chief Merrifield, I did want to publicly again apologize for calling you Chief Mitchell yet again. I give you full permission, if I do that again, to taze me, so. Because that's the only way it'll go out of my head, so.
Two years, two years later, I'm still in his footprint.
I'm sorry. It's, it's habit-forming. I asked Ms. Brooks. That happens often, so. Often when I'm tired or, or I've been thinking too much, but I apologize. And I will try not to let it happen again, so.
That's fine. It's actually, it's actually a compliment. It's a high.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
That was Dwayne, Annie.
Yes. Told you they were all going to be that short.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All members voted in motion. We stand adjourned.